We are live on YouTube, Wendy.
Alrighty, great, and it's eight o'clock, so I will start off our meeting today with a right to know checklist while folks are still settling in. As Chair of the Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are using the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing 603-236-4730, or by clicking on the website address www.waterbovalley.org. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Water Bo Valley website at waterbovalley.org. We're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-236-4730, or email at townofvw@waterbovalley.org. D) Will be adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access it. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. And also, please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be taken by a roll call. So, we will start, oh, um, sorry, Nancy just texted me, she's having trouble with the link. Nick, would you resend her a fresh one, please?
I will, I'll do it.
Thank you. So we'll start with a roll call. We do have a new member who I'd like to welcome first. Lisa Reed is going to be joining us as an alternate. So typically, we would go through in alphabetical order. Lisa, I have you at the end right now, and we'll sort you in, but just so you can see from everyone else's example, how we do the roll call. And we'll wait for Nancy to get her thing figured out. Mike?
Mike, Mike Copel, member.
Bill Larson. Let's see, is he on the participant list?
I see him.
Bill? Are you able to, oh, I see, I see too.
Probably muted.
No, I don't see him muted.
I see you raising your hand, okay. Well, I'll mark your present, and we'll just maybe sign out and sign back in again? I don't know. Okay, Wendy Rathgaber, member. John?
John Racine, member.
Rich?
Rich Reader, Select Ford Ex officio.
Bill Spence?
Bill Spence, member.
Terry?
Terry Wade, alternate.
Rob?
I have not seen Rob.
Okay. And Nancy back with us yet? Yeah? Lisa?
Yes, alternate.
Okay, if you just want to state your name and alternate, that would be great.
Lisa Reed, alternate.
Wonderful, welcome. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, we know that Nancy is working through this. We just hope keep an eye on that, Nick, and make sure she gets in, and we will go ahead on to review the minutes of our last meeting from April 8. Did anyone have any comments, corrections for these meeting minutes? No comments from the Board? Come on, Terry, you don't have anything? Alright, if there aren't any corrections, do I hear a motion?
A motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Mike Copel, I second.
Excellent. All those in favor? Let's see, is Nancy with us yet?
No.
Okay, Mike?
Mike Copel, aye.
Bill Larson, has he figured this out? See here? Oh, technical.
Do not see him back.
Back, okay. Wendy Rathgaber, yes. John?
John Racine, yes.
Rich?
Rich Reader, yes.
Bill Spence?
Bill Spence, yes.
And Lisa, just so you're clear, for alternates, we do encourage participation through comments and all that. For votes, alternates aren't included unless if they're seated, and since barring the technical difficulties, we do have all of our full members present today. At this point, I'm not going to see anyone unless if we see that someone has.
Bill's coming back in.
I'm sorry?
Bill is coming back in.
Great.
Nancy is trying. I believe it's an internet problem with her.
Okay. Alright, so we have a very amount of people joining us today, which is wonderful. The civic engagement is great. We would like to ask, please, that everyone sign in, it's much easier. Oh, I should also welcome, Nick, you're not alone, right? Alicia is with you.
That is correct.
So today is Nick's final Planning Board meeting, and Alicia will be taking our minutes and helping to keep us on a straight track from here on out. So welcome, Alicia.
Thank you, hello.
Alright, so it's much easier for Nick and Alicia, if you can please put your name in the comment section, so they know who, what members of the public are present. Also, when it comes time to making any comments, if you would state your name then as well. For ease of giving everyone time to make comments, we will ask that folks use your raise hand reaction. That will help put you, you know, in a priority list. It's something that Nick and Alicia will help us keep an eye on. If you had trouble, I know some people earlier couldn't find the raise hand, the thumbs up, some sort of reaction that Nick would be able to see that you have something to say, and of course, using the chat could also work. Alright, so, and if everyone can mute themselves, if they're not going to be commenting, that's helpful as well. If things, if things get a bit heated, I'm not a fan of doing this, but I will mute all if if things get a little bit too back and forth. When it comes time to making any comments or addressing questions to others in the group, it should all come through through me as the Chair, so we'll just try to keep this orderly and friendly. Alright, so let's start with our first item. We have a subdivision and site plan application from Ben Legere. Golden Heights Road, let's start. Board members, we had the time to review the subdivision application. And our first step is to see if everyone agrees that it's complete. So, all the Board members reviewed the application for the subdivision?
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Yes?
This is Tim Britton from Cleveland Waters and Bass. I represent Jenny Lucas. Is the subdivision application on the agenda today?
Uh, yes, it's, we have it as site plan slash subdivision application on the agenda. I don't know if you have a.
The subdivision application was not filed within 20 days, 21 days of today's meeting, in violation of the subdivision regulations.
Tara and Nick were kind of handling that aspect of it. Can you guys comment to the timing, please?
It's true that the signed subdivision application came in a little after that. It was in before the public notice period. All of the other material with it was here 21 days, because it's the same material as the site plan application.
Well, if it, the subdivision application is dated April 29th, so that is almost a week after the deadline of April 21. So I do not see how you can be considering that application when it was not submitted 21 days prior to this meeting. I think that makes this an illegal meeting.
Well, from what I understand, the the regulations are to make sure that the town clerks and everyone involved has the time to process the paperwork correctly. There were not any delays that I'm aware of, of public notice, correct?
Nevertheless, it's supposed to be in 21 days prior to the meeting. It may be for the Board's convenience, but it's also for the public's convenience to have a sufficient amount of time to prepare for the meeting. And I think if you're not going to follow your rules, that's a violation of due process rights.
Alright, I hear that. How does, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Wendy, this is Rich. I'm a little bit confused here as to what was and was not submitted. What was submitted, it was everything except the signature page. Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
We had all of the required plans.
By the 20, by the required date?
21st.
The 21st.
Nick would have to confirm that, but that's my understanding.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But the application itself with the checklist within the application was not received by the 21st, is that correct?
The signed copy of the subdivision application was not received until the 29th. All the materials was received on the 21st of April.
Then the application itself was not received 21 days prior to the meeting?
Well, I'd like to hear what the rest of the Board thinks about this. In my mind, that's a little bit, I don't know, we had all the information, but what, what's the thought to some of the other members of the Board?
It seems to me that we're discussing a technicality. I don't know what Mr. Britton's position is, but does it make a difference to you, Mr. Britton, for what you would do next? If the Board were to say, "I think this is a technicality, and that we have the information that we needed, and that we reviewed it according to our regulations."
My position will be, if I appeal the decision of this Planning Board, that it was an illegal meeting.
Have you run into this before, Tara?
I've never run into, sorry, the, I've never run into a meeting being challenged based on a minor detail coming in after the 21 days. It's pretty common that we get the bulk of the material 21 days, and that gives me an opportunity to reach out and say, "Hey, or the 10-day notice period, we need these other things." And I did that, and we got those other things, and that other form was one of those.
Okay.
That's, that's normally how it's done. We don't, we don't normally have, we often don't have every last detail by 21 days.
But you do have the application within 21 days, and here you do not. And I don't think it's a mere technicality, it's a requirement of your subdivision regulations.
Wendy, I'm gonna suggest that people address you.
Yes, yeah.
I'm not gonna have back and forth with the Butters attorney.
Okay.
I have, it's Mike Copel, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
I understand the technicality. In my prior life, as people know, I lived in technicality. But here's, and I do understand and appreciate, the question that I have is, did everyone receive the information in sufficient time for them to do a detailed review of, of all of the information? I know, I can say I did. So that's just me, I did, I read the letter from, I apologize, I forget Jenny Lucas's attorney's name, I apologize, sir. I read your letter in detail. It appeared, based upon my reading of the letter, that you had sufficient time to do a detailed review, since you wrote a very, very comprehensive, well-drafted document, which would seem to say that you had time to do it. So I guess the question here is, yes, I understand the technicality, I appreciate the technicality, but the reality is, everyone had, I think, sufficient time to do the review.
Yep. Alright, so.
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Okay.
I had sufficient time by staying up all night to prepare a letter. I did not have 21 days to fully analyze this matter and be able to do a more comprehensive review.
But in fairness, Nick, when was all of the information released for public review?
I would have to check the official date that the public notice was posted. Jenny came in, I think, the day it was posted to gather materials, and then I sent them to her electronically earlier this week when she asked. There was never a point where someone asked to see documents where we told them no, because we didn't have them.
Yeah, did the eight-day difference make a change in when the documents were available?
No.
Wendy, can I just clarify the process for the Board and the other public members? I just want to clarify that the proposal needs site plan approval and subdivision approval. The application material is the same for both. What, what we, what we didn't receive on time was, was a piece of paperwork, the signed subdivision application, which is in my mind, a technicality. It's, it's one application that needs both kinds of approval. But the application material and the plans themselves are the same for both, and we had those on time.
This is Rich, may I, may I comment too?
Please do.
This is a comment, a question, and perhaps a motion. First, if you look at Section 9 of our Site Plan Review Regulations under Section A waivers, I think it does deal with the issue of a technicality in terms of what we can and cannot waive if we want to. If the lawyer, Mr. Britton wishes to pursue this, which leads me to my question to the applicant, Mr. Legere. If he is comfortable going forward with our discussion of this, given that the, one of the lawyers of the Butters, or the lawyer of one of the Butters is indicating that they may take legal action, considering this illegal, an illegal discussion, and if Mr. Legere is willing to go for it, I would move that the Board vote as to whether or not we should discuss this site application.
Can I ask a question to everybody? If we are going to postpone, when would be the due date for changes for the next meeting? If I was to.
With a, with a regularly scheduled meeting, it would be the 21 days before.
That would be, I'd have like two weeks. Because I mean, at this point, yeah, I mean, I've made my case to everybody, you know, I've, you know, at this point, if we're gonna miss the ski season, there's gonna be changes to the plan. If, you know, if we're gonna do this technicality delay thing, where we're gonna miss another season, it's probably gonna be a change.
That wasn't really Rich's question to you.
Yeah.
What he's asking is if you're comfortable with going forward, knowing that there might be a litigious backlash?
I have an idea, Wendy.
Okay.
So we're probably, we're probably looking at another meeting anyway. There's likely to be some questions that the Board wants some additional information for, and things like the municipal services letter, I'm gonna be looking for a little bit more on drainage. It would be, it would be possible to, because it's all the same material, to accept the site plan application, which I think Mr. Britton agrees was in on time. Have the public hearing. Give Ben all the comments and feedback he needs to finish things up at next month's meeting, and put the subdivision on that meeting. And it would be merely a, really a technicality to accept it as complete and have the public hearing, and then make, make the decision all at the same time. I don't think Ben would lose any ground that way, and we'd be addressing the challenge.
Yeah, I mean, I have a, I do have a team, I mean, you know, at this point, wait a sec. Yeah, I mean, I guess, so you're saying we should present tonight, and then we'll continue to the next meeting for the technicality?
Well, my expectation is it's, it's the Board, you know, the Board has 65 days, of course, from accepting the site plan as complete, and there's some, there's some additional information that's gonna be needed. So you're looking at at least, at least another month anyway, before you have your final approval.
Okay.
It would be easy to, to put, put the subdivision application on that agenda.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I mean, we could do, I think what my people are saying is we can open the hearing for the site plan review, and then we'll do the subdivision next meeting.
That makes sense to me. Jenny Lucas, you have your hand raised?
Just to clarify, the site plan review application has the same 21-day application deadline. I'm not quite sure if that was.
It was, not. Yeah, that was. That's the point that Tara's been making, is we got all the information for the site plan, and there's a huge overlap with the subdivision as well, requirements. So all of that information was received, it was just the signed signature page for the subdivision that was not received. It was one of those missing bits that had to be reminded of, which happens.
Madam Chair, I have my hand up.
Okay.
The sub, the site plan review right, application is not a standalone application. It is dependent upon a subdivision, and it has to be considered at the same time as a subdivision. So I think it is premature to consider the site plan review application, and to consider it as complete when you don't have a valid subdivision application before you until it has been filed 21 days prior to a public hearing. So I would object to proceeding on that level. If you want to have a conceptual presentation of the project, and then defer the public hearing until the next meeting, I would proceed with that.
Tara, can you speak to that?
My understanding, and I'm not, I'm not an attorney, I'm a 30-plus-year in New Hampshire planner, is that applicants can get the approvals they need in any order. If, if the Board were to approve, approve the site plan application before having a subdivision application, they would, of course, need to condition that approval with a condition precedent of having the subdivision approval. That's my understanding.
That sounds like it makes sense. Any other Board members want to chime in on where we're going here? I like the idea of doing the site plan today. I do feel like it's a technicality for the signature page of the subdivision being received eight days later. And there are, there are some items that we will need to follow up on, so I feel like this wouldn't have been resolved in this month, this month's meeting completely anyway. But any, any Board comments on doing the site plan today and subdivision next month?
This is Rich, I concur. This is Mike Copel, I concur.
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
I, in spite of the technicalities and the fact that I appreciate, that is, I read the letter as well, and I understand what's in it. But we have been looking at this proposal for months. It's not as if we don't have or have not had time to review it. So you asked for comment, and I would say that we could proceed.
So would you agree with doing the site plan today, the subdivision?
Yes. I have one further question.
Please.
And has Town Council been advised of this condition that we're facing today?
I'm not sure if there's been time. We just received the letter yesterday. Mark or Nick, can you speak to that?
No, he, no, we have not.
I'd be interested in his advice.
Yeah, there might be some other points we'll need his advice on as well. Let me just go down the list, because I'd like to hear everyone's feedback on this. Nancy? Sorry, yours is at the top of the list.
Yeah, it seems like a reasonable compromise. On the, but I should say, on the one hand, I was involved in a real estate transaction court incident, where we won because the other people were not timely, and it was only like a couple of days off. So I recognize that courts take dates quite seriously, and we should too.
Understood. But doing the site plan today and the subdivision next month, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, I, um, maybe Rich can share, because I didn't take a look at that paragraph on what the Planning Board is allowed to waive, because if we can waive that time limit, then I'm totally fine with it.
So this is Rich, I'll just read directly, Section 9, Paragraph A, waivers. Upon written Upon written request by the applicant, the board may vote to waive in whole or in part specific provisions of these regulations. This is for site plan review. When in the majority opinion of the board, colon, sub-paragraph one, strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent and intent of the regulations or two specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land in such site plan indicate that the wave will properly carry out the spirit and intention of the regulations. So this is why I asked Mr. Legere if he was okay with going forward with any discussion dealing with possible legal challenge later on. So as I understand it, he's saying he's willing to go ahead with this, with this two-part process, as you outlined, Wendy, and I see Tara has her.
Yeah.
It's a waiver of the subdivision regulations you would need. You, you have no need to waive anything under the site plan regulations. You had all of that on time. So.
Great, thank you.
Looking at it as section 601 in the subdivision regulations, which is very similar.
Which are similar language.
Like, but.
Okay. Bill Larson? Oh, you're still muted, Bill. No, it's still muted, let me see.
I'm okay with going ahead.
Okay, thank you. John?
I'm okay with going ahead, but is there a possibility of a meeting in between the next meeting to complete the 21 days?
As of the 20th, it would then fall, I believe, right within the correct timeframe.
Just curious, we could do a special meeting, but just curious if that would help.
Appreciate that, if that's possible.
Okay. Mr. Britton has his hand raised?
Yes, if you're proceeding under 6.01, this waiver has not been requested in writing by the applicant and it has nothing to do with section 505. It has something to do with 502. I would suggest to you that you do not have the right to waive this requirement and would respectfully suggest to you that proceeding is going to lead to further consequences. I don't mean to be threatening, but I think it's not only for the board's benefit to have materials, it's also intended for people who are directly affected by a project to have the benefit of materials. So.
Yeah, that's completely understood and we would never ever want to withhold or rush anything through. As Nick has stated, the, excuse me, provision of the documents, the availability of the documents to the public was timely. No one was denied access to anything because of any timing issues. So technically, we were to wait one more week to do this again. It seems to me that, you know, we may as well do what we can today.
Can I ask a question? If, so if this was one building, would I, what, what is the, would that just be a site plan review? And we would avoid the subdivision altogether?
No, condominium development needs subdivision approval as well.
Yeah.
Just a regular multifamilies?
If it's going to be a condominium development.
Okay, yeah, so it's a site plan review, but the subdivision would be off the table and the PUD and all that would be.
No, but, but you didn't hear my answer. I, yes, it would need subdivision approval because it's a condominium development.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't change your plans to get around it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess we would request a special meeting at this point. You know, I think that's the best course of action.
Okay. We've heard, you know what, Terry? You have any thoughts since you're our most recent former chair?
Well, I was going to suggest earlier that we just acknowledge the the minor issue and go ahead into the review. I think approval today would be probably unanticipated, but if you put off the approval till after this is taken care of, then as long as Mr. Legere would go along with it, then I would think that the board would proceed. If there is a challenge, there might be a challenge, but with this, with regard to this particular meeting, there would not have been any decision made. So I would, I would think that the course you're pursuing is probably good.
All right. So it sounds like the board is in agreement. We'll move forward. Now, is everyone comfortable with? Oh, Tara?
We asked Mr. Britton if he is asking for it to be re-noticed for the next meeting or if it would be acceptable to continue the review of the subdivision application to the next meeting?
Mr. Britton?
Well, I haven't had a chance to discuss this question with my client. But I would be comfortable with a continuance of the entire proceedings to a special meeting without requirement of new notices to Ms. Lucas, because she's here tonight. I'm not going to comment on whether other members of the public are entitled to have the additional notice required by statute and your regulations.
Okay, does that answer your question, Tara?
No.
I didn't think so.
I think the board should decide whether, whether you're gonna ask Alicia to send out notices for the subdivision application for the next meeting or whether you're just gonna continue that, have the, have, review the site plan application and, and open that public hearing, continue that public hearing to the next meeting and then address the subdivision application.
Yeah, I like the idea of.
We did mention a conceptual, because I, from what I'm hearing, my team's not willing to proceed. They just, they want to do the 21 days. But someone mentioned that we could potentially do a conceptual, conceptual review over what we have to get some of the, you know, issues that we can kind of be ahead of time. And then I think we should do a formal meeting and try to maybe do it in one meeting, if that's possible. So we're not going to officially, you know, today, if we could do a conceptual meeting. And hopefully by, you know, the next, you know, 21 days of everything. And can we do a special meeting in 21 days, so three weeks from now and we notice everybody?
We wouldn't have to do 21 days from today. We're talking 21 days from the 29th.
Okay.
There's still going to be additional information requested, so it's going to be another meeting anyway. And I don't, I mean, the, Wendy, the applicant doesn't drive the timing. It's not, it's not in the applicant's court. And if, if you treat it as a conceptual today, you're re-noticing all of it for the next meeting. You've got something that you don't open.
Right, but if his team has concerns, your, your team has concerns over the legal ramifications, is that correct, Ben?
We just, yeah, we don't want to drag out things that are going to come on appeal, you know? Because if it is, I mean, I've already made, you know, this is the application to try to get middle ground and we don't really want to drag this middle application out too long. So if we're going to do it, we want to do it right. You know, my thought is if it's going to take two meetings, can we get in a conceptual, some of the concerns and stuff out this meeting? And is it possible to do, you know, a subdivision approval in one meeting if we at least have a heads up on what we have today?
Yeah, it would seem as though we could do a conceptual today, run through the items that.
Theoretically, could we?
But look, yeah, let's say, I, I, I agree that that's what makes sense. What makes sense here is let's do a conceptual meeting, get all of the currently perceived issues out on the table so that you can address them and have them ready in to approve at either, at the next regular meeting and discuss everything at that time. That's what makes the most sense to me. It avoids, I think, any potential regal ramifications. I think, although I'm not an attorney either, but I think that would be the case. And, and I think that's what makes the most sense here, so that everyone knows what the potential issues are that we currently have on the tape. I think that makes tremendous sense.
All right. So we can do a conceptual today. We'll ask Alicia to re-notice the meeting, the hearings for the June meeting and we'll do it that way. If everyone's fine with that?
Yep.
Okay. So.
I, I did hear Jay Lucas's attorney agree to that. I'm not sure he has to.
I, I think he's.
I'm not sure he has any choice.
I think he's the one who suggested it actually, but did you have any thoughts, Mr. Britton?
I think the board is entitled to do a conceptual hearing when they want to do a conceptual hearing. I don't think there's any public notice requirement for a conceptual hearing.
Thank you.
All right. Just because it's a change of what's on the agenda, let's do a quick roll call vote that we're all fine with doing it this way. So we're swapping out on our agenda today, the subdivision and site plan review application, bumping that to next month and today replacing it with a conceptual review. So if everyone's in favor of doing it that way, Nancy?
So Nancy Knight, and I forgot to mention that I am a resident of the development, although not a direct abutter. And it's still 5:00 AM. I'm okay with it, yes.
Okay.
But you look, you look magnificent as always, if I'm allowed to say things like that.
Okay. So just going back to our change in procedure, Mike, are you good with this?
Mike Capel, I'm okay with this.
Bill Larson? Maybe just nod, Bill, or shake your head.
Theo's not working well today.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I'm okay with this.
Okay, thank you. Myself, I'm good with it. John?
John Racine, I'm fine with it.
Rich?
Rich, I'm good.
Bill Spence? You're muted, Bill.
Yes, I'm in favor of proceeding.
Okay. We all do it that way. So a conceptual. Can we start? Ben, if you're okay with this, did you want to do a presentation? Do you want to hear?
Provided, yeah. Nick, can you, Nick Cracknell, can you share a screen or we just have like a little PowerPoint thing to run through?
Nick or Alicia are going to have to let me do that.
Okay.
You are now able to share your screen.
Thank you. Can everyone see this?
Uh, yes. There you go. All right. So this is the updated design. Obviously, we're here to do the lot merger and the full site plan review with the subdivision. As you can see, it's a little different. We definitely took some of the comments last meeting to heart. You know, we tried to look, we looked very close at our neighbor next to us, you know, the massing of their building, the peaks, the finishes, the, you know, with the stone on the base, the, you know, the timber frame detail on the top. You know, we tried pretty hard to kind of get matched in. So Nick, you'll go to the next slide.
Sorry.
All right. So this is the, the site, obviously everybody's seen. We have a team, Dave Daley. He's our bill partner is on today. Ben Legere, that's me from the Down East Residential. Nick Cracknell is our representative helping with the permitting. Will Davis from Horizon Engineering is on today. He's our engineer. William Nolan from Savoy Nolan Architects is not on today, but he's, he's our in-house architect. Howard Snyder is our landscape architect and Derek Durbin is our attorney on the project. I think we go to the next slide. So we're seeking approval of a sub to plan merger and the site plan approval for a plan unit development layout of multiple principal buildings in the Village Center District. To provide a layout of density, building type and site design and fully complies with the use and density requirements of the Village Center District. So the project goals are, we want to comply with the development standards, use density and dimensional requirements of the Village Commercial District. Propose a PUD that meets the requirements for site plan and subdivision approval. And, you know, we would like to commence construction in July of 2021, potentially to hit some portion of the ski season this year, at least in one of the buildings. So I'm going to hand it over to Nick to kind of explain the rest of it, some of the design details and the neighborhood aspects.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Wendy, members of the, of the board. A couple of these slides are a little bit redundant from our public hearing that we had and the vote in early April, I think the 8th. But we're in the Village Commercial District. This is about a one acre parcel with frontage on Valley Road and Golden Heights Road. It has permitted uses in this district as singles, twos and multifamily uses. The access is off Golden Heights Road and a driveway easement coming off Golden Heights. There's no minimum lot size in the zoning for multifamily uses and no coverage requirements in the underlying dimensional requirements. And the maximum building height is 45 feet under the ordinance and the dimensional setbacks, all 20 feet, front side and rear. In terms of the neighborhood context, we're obviously at the gate, the gateway here of the Village Center and the town square. It's a relatively low density, larger volume neighborhood. There are some multifamilies in the direct vicinity of our property. But the larger neighborhood are larger single family homes. Many forested areas, the golf course is just down the street and there's a multi-use recreational trail that moves along the front of the property on Valley Road. This is the April 8th PUD plan that was approved, showing 13 units in three buildings. There are six units in each of the townhouse buildings facing Valley Road with access to covered parking along Valley Road and then auxiliary parking along the access easement driveway. And there's also a single family structure just to the northeast. So three buildings on the site, three principal buildings meets the density requirements as we, we know from our prior meetings, the use requirements as well as the dimensional. So that project was approved on the 8th of April. So in terms of zoning, there's about 50% of the lot that is designated as open space. The, the coverage is about 22%. The building height's about 39 feet, 38.6, 38 and a half. There are, I believe, 28 off-street parking spaces still available. We've made some revisions for the conceptual site plan and subdivision application that was filed. The townhouse units are approximately 2,000 square feet in size and there's the public access trail along the bottom of the site. So in terms of the neighborhood character, we looked at the, the other multifamily building that abuts or is, is just up the street on Brownstone Way from, from this property. And that building is a three-unit building of a similar, similar size and character to what we're proposing. When you look at the building, we've got the rendering there that was the front page of the PowerPoint presentation. That's a six-unit building, but it's really been designed to look like three units with the two gables on either end and the sort of shed roof in the middle. So we've got a three-story townhouse style building. It's got clavards and shingles. We've, we've spent a fair bit of time in the last month since we've been here redoing sort of the skin of that building and the proportions to texture it better into the character and respond to some of your comments from both the April and the March meeting. We've got a stone base on the building. The contemporary window design pattern is, is really on the Brownstone Way building, not ours. We have a very traditional. We've got a stone base on the building. Uh, the contemporary window design pattern is, is really on the Brownstone Way building, not ours. We have a very traditional, instead of openings, windows, doors, roof lines, chimneys, base, the, uh, the porches. As you can see in the image, uh, there's very little contemporary aspect to what we're proposing for the townhouse buildings. In fact, all three. So, uh, we have multiple principal buildings. There are three, uh, those buildings, those two townhouse buildings you see in the rendering are separated with some, uh, a narrow open space between the two buildings. We've got stone on the base and the chimneys, some standing seam metal roofs on the, uh, the porches. And over a couple of the windows and we've got, um, a weathered wood architectural shingle on the, the roof to soften the, the volume and, uh, blend more with the surrounding context. We've added timber bracketing as, uh, Ben pointed out, and we've, we've got a landscape plan that was also submitted as part of that package. So these are some of the details of what I just went through. Um, we're really making an effort to make this building, uh, given its size in the Village Commercial District to blend with its surroundings and fit into that site. So I think if Will is, if Will is on the, uh, the call, I'm going to pass it to him. Ben, is Will there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm here.
And maybe you could just ask Will if he wants me to, uh, work the slideshow while he does the presentation. Otherwise, he could share his screen.
His screens. Uh, Will, do you want to share your screen or?
Well, I mean, we can work through, through this, I, I suppose. Nick, if that's right.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. So, so my name's Will Davis. I'm with Horizons Engineering. Um, we're the surveyor and civil engineer. Working with, with the team on the, um, utilities and drainage design and grading. So Nick, you can go to the next slide, I guess, here. So this is existing conditions. I think, um, Nick touched on this and you are all familiar with the site. There are two, two, um, lots here now. So part of what we're trying to accomplish includes a lot merger, um, to combine them. There are, there's a driveway easement on the north side, um, driveway and utility easement. Which we'll be utilizing for the driveway. Um, so Nick, I don't know if you can zoom in on this a little bit. Maybe not. There you go. So this just shows a little more detail on the parking layout. And, and how the site lays out. Um, so we have an access drive on the upper north side, which will provide, um, parking along the exterior of the building. As well as access to the residential unit at the end. And then there's also a lower, um, access drive off of Golden Heights, uh, which will provide access to the, um, garage bays on the walkouts for, um, the units there. Um, I think most of the details on the next sheet, we can see the utilities and the drainage design. Can step through that. So. This sheet shows, um, sewer and water services will be coming in on the, the north, the upper side, uh, the top of the sheet sewer is right there. Coming through with two manholes and individual services for each unit. Similarly, the water will come, um, a few feet off, five feet off the building there, close to the, the front of the building on the north side. With individual services to each unit. And they'll be provided, um, fire suppression as well as the domestic, um, service. For the drainage, um, as you're probably well familiar, the, the site slopes from top to bottom on the page here. There are some existing drainage along Golden Heights and Valley Road, which we'll be maintaining. So there's some existing culverts that, that we will be connecting via manholes to just maintain those, those pathways. As far as, um, detaining and treating, um, the runoff generated by the, the new impervious. Basically, the, the, we're proposing the, obviously, the buildings and the, the buildings will be impervious and the, um, patios will be impervious. But the driveways, the accessways and the parking are pervy porous pavement. So that's, that's, um, part of how we're, um, managing the stormwater and, um, and maintaining the existing peak rates as they discharge. Um, the, the roofs will be directed to an underground chamber system on the lower drive, which takes about half of that lower drive section. It's a chamber system, um, capable of some infiltration and detention, um, with a final outfall that, um, is directed towards the, um, culvert in the bottom left of the site there. Which is where all the existing runoff ends up from the site. The other thing I would touch on is, um, the snow storage. Looks like we're loo, we lost the sheet here for a second. Um, the, the intent is to plow, you know, plow, um, to the, to the right of the upper driveway. And so, so there's some snow storage up there. There's also the ability to, um, to clear and, and store in some of the landscaped areas on the upper section, right, right there and on the right and the left. And then down below, um, the plowing would, would, would go on the left side of that, on the lower side, and then at the end there, um, off the end would be the snow storage. Um, and so runoff from those snow piles, um, would head towards, um, in the lower section. It would be directed towards that culvert in the bottom left. And that, that existing drainage swale there, yeah. Um, so that's where that runoff goes now. And then on the upper section, the parking is, is pitched a little bit away from the building towards the upper part of the sheet. So it would go into a, a small swale up there, right, where it's directed. It, it's kind of split, so half of it goes back towards Golden Heights and half goes towards the other drainage swale there. Yeah. So that's kind of the, the, the overview of the utilities, drainage and, and snow storage. I think, you know, I'd be happy to take questions once we get through the presentation on the details of that, but, um, maybe the next step is the landscaping plan, I think, Nick.
Can I go back a sec? It's Mike Capel.
Um, why don't we, can we do the questions at the end?
Sure. Okay, no problem.
Thanks, Mike.
Will, can you see that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ben, I think the, does Linsky, Architect, no?
No, he's not on this time. Um, so I mean, I could talk about, you know, the landscape architect, we, I mean, there's plantings existing along the front of the site, along, uh, Valley Road. Uh, someone, you know, there's new trees planted pretty regularly down there. You know, the places we have to plant trees, we are, uh, up top, we're going to have a couple of trees in the middle section, uh, next to the driveway. We're going to have a few trees flanking each side of the patios on the side. And then we're going to have kind of a big tree, uh, at the end, um, around the dumpster. And we're going to try to maintain, you know, as much as the wood line, you know, as we can when we have to do the, the, uh, barrier. Um, and then the patios are going to be planted out around the outside, you know, to block some of the stone wall. I mean, from the street, you're going to see, you know, a stone wall, um, with some plantings around the face of it. And then, um, you know, everything else grasped, and then we're going to try to add, you know, potentially some, um, plants along the bottom of the driveway, although, snow storage, we have to be careful. It's going to be, you know, plantings like grasses, stuff like that, that potentially it's not in right now, but we're going to see when we get in there, uh, the grade slope. But due to snow storage, planting next to drive, driveways is a little bit difficult. And then up top of around the front, you'll see there are some plantings inside that center planter, uh, where the double tree is and between the two parking areas. We're going to plant out the corners of those with, with beds. And around the back patio. So, you know, anywhere we kind of can fit plantings, we are going to, um, we're going to, the, the sedges trees are going to add, you know, some canopy around the exterior of the building. Um, and then there is a pretty good line, uh, currently that exists on this, uh, you know, this, uh, lower port portion of the multi-use trail. So once grown in, um, there's going to be a completely surrounded with trees as the rendering kind of shows. So.
That's it, Wendy.
Okay, um, do you guys have any details you can show on the lighting and signage?
We do have a standard light. Um, it's right now, it's, it's basically one kind of light fixture. It's, it's kind of a downward facing dark sky goose neck light. That's going to be over the doors, um, on the lower level. Yeah, kind of like that. So basically, they'll be fixed over the doors on the side and the rear, and then in the, the, the top side of the lot, they're actually going to have canopy, so they're probably going to be recess cans in there. So that's right now, that it's going to be kind of one consistent light fixture, um, around, and anything else will be downward facing recess cans to keep the dark sky.
So are you just planning lighting on the building and nothing on the pave area?
Yeah, yeah. So basically, it's going to be building lighting, um, right, right now. Yeah.
Okay. And do you have signage plans or are you?
We haven't decided on that, so we kind of figured if we do, we'll come back in. Um, you know, we're not necessarily convinced we, we need a sign. But if we do, you know, we'll come back in. Maybe next meeting we might have one. We, we really haven't made a solid decision if we're going to do, you know, a con, a sign or not. So.
I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
Probably, this is for Ben and Nick, and it's a regard to the dumpster. Can you bring that slide up where that dumpster is going to go? Right in that back corner?
Yeah.
Now, is there going to be like, uh, a structure around that dumpster, like a corral type?
Yeah. The town has a standard. I, I got it from DPW. It's, it's, you know, it's, uh, it's basically wood fencing that goes around it and they, they, they sent me the detail. So it will be an enclosure though. It'll be a wooden closure.
All right, and, um, the question to the, I guess, to maybe Mark, is that considered a permanent structure or the planning board, is that considered a permanent structure? The dumpster corral?
I believe it's considered fencing, but Mark, correct me if I'm wrong.
I mean, it is.
We've not considered it a structure anywhere else.
Okay. Uh, another question in regards to the multipurpose trail. So Ben, um, you've got the building, the driveway, the multipurpose trail and culvert right in there.
Yep.
And then the street, the Valley Road Street. Um, are all those going to fit in there? Do you have to move the multipurpose trail or the culvert or anything?
We can, uh, because, you know, there is the ability to, to shift that little dip of, that little jog of the trail. I mean, if we want, there is enough room though. Um, you know, there is, the grade is not that much different than it, so, and it's, you know, we do have some good room, but you know, if people wanted to give a little bit more buffer, I mean, we can, you know, shift the trail a little bit, but it's not like we're near it, you know, we're, we're, we're good. Yeah.
And the width of the trail, is that considered, um, any certain standard width? I, I don't really, really know.
I think it's 10 feet.
And you'll, you'll maintain that 10 feet on that trail?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, Wendy.
Okay.
I guess to Will, I have a couple actually. The, um, snow storage typically around here, you figure a ratio of about 20, 25%. What, what ratio were you using when you came up with the areas? They look a little light.
Well.
Sorry, I'm, I was muted. Um, yeah, um, you know, I don't know if we did a full calculation on that, but I can, I can double check those numbers.
And when you're doing that, you might even look at that lower left corner. You've got a, the, an encroachment on your, um, a butter.
Oh, the snow store.
Yeah, I did see that. We will, we will fix that.
I think it also is true as a slow easement at that area. You're probably going to need a slow easement to, to deal with that. Doesn't show on this particular drawing, but on the other one, the contour is shown. You can look at that. In the drawings that I reviewed earlier, there was an underdrain system. It doesn't seem to show up in any of these drawings. Has that been abandoned or what, what's the deal with that?
No, it's in the drawings. It's in the, I think it's on the grading plan. Um, you can see the U D line. But it's in, it's in the details.
Okay, there it is. Is this, um, now, if there was a comment by one of the, um, not really a butter, but one of the, uh, public that the dumpster was going to sit right directly over one of these underdrains. Is, is that your intent to do that or? Does that seem like, does that seem like a good idea to put a dumpster directly over an underdrain system?
Think it is.
Well, currently it's shown as all porous pavement, um, through there.
And there is an underdrain pipe going right out the middle of that extension where the, uh, I, I, there's a little square mark out there. I assume that's for the dumpster. It doesn't say, but.
Yeah.
You might want to look at that, uh, perhaps relocate either the pipe or the, the dumpster. And with regard to your, um, impervious layers, the roofs and so forth, you're putting that into, you've got, uh, downspouts and does that go into the underdrain system? Is that a recharge system? Is that what it is?
Yes, it's a, an infiltrating chamber system.
So it works as a detention pond, so to speak?
Right, it detains and, and meters out, um, but also has some infiltration capacity.
Because it looks like it drains right directly to, uh, uh, the daylight, just before it flows into the stream.
It does, right. So there's an, there's an overflow outlet, which, which is, has an orifice on it and a weir.
Okay, so there is a weir in there that this, the water will come on in the chambers before it exits to the.
Correct.
River.
Correct. Right. There's an outlet structure. You see the, the D with the circle is the outlet structure and it has a weir and an orifice and, and so it, it slowly meters out over time.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Mike Capel, I know you'd had a question earlier. No? Okay.
Wendy?
Yes. Sorry.
With respect.
One, so.
Uh, another, another question for, about drainage. Uh, we walked the property a few days ago. The, the, the stream on the upper left, down the left side, it's marked like wetland. That's actually a flowing stream. And, uh, a comment was made by one of the butters that during a significant rain event, the big rain event that occurred in this territory was Irene, Hurricane Irene. And that area was thigh-deep water during that event. And the terrain on which the prop, your project is going to be built is a significant, um, gradient. So during a, a large rain event, the water is just going to pour down the mountainside. I don't know if you've done the, your, if your calculations take into account a significant rain event like this, and what would happen if we did have something of that nature? My concern is one that the, the dumpster would be, well, partly underwater. And I don't know that the drainage that's provided would be sufficient to carry the water away.
So, so the drainage design that we've done for the site is intended to, um, show no increase in runoff from our site. I mean, I know most of this, that portion on that corner is in a fill section, so it, it will be elevated from the, the stream, um, that you're referring to. But, you know, part of our. Um, but, you know, part of our, our analysis wasn't really to look at off-site streams, um, necessarily. And the, and, and that, you know, we were focused on, the focus of, of this application is to not increase the runoff from this site.
This site, which is what we've accomplished.
Um, Mark, you have a question?
Um, I did review that specific question that Bill just asked about the dumpster with Jim Mayhew. And if you look on the plan here, it appears it's six or seven feet higher than the stream area. When we were looking at the plan, that's what we were looking at. Um, and with that amount, even if it were thigh-deep bill along the stream, you would still have several feet before you got to the dumpster. This is higher than the stream bed. So Jim, uh, Jim and I have concluded there's no real threat to the dumpster enclosure. Uh, from that area, from that runoff. But we did look at it.
Great. Yeah, I looked at it too. And if you look at the elevations that they're proposing, that, that is true. But I wanna go back to what Terry said. Um, I am concerned with the, uh, snow storage. Um, we had a pretty light snowfall this year, but if you go back to our normal snowfall. Um, my concern is to make sure that under no circumstances would the snow storage be on the trail. Cause people do use that for snow shoeing and cross country skiing. It theoretically can be groomed.
But one thing, one thing we have done in the past, uh, because I've worked on tight sites before, is you can put a provision, um, in the condo association documents. That, um, you know, if it does hit a certain point past snow storage, that it's mandated with the company to truck offsite. Um, we've done that many a times, you know, um, on tighter sites, but I, I do think we could get the 25% on our lot. Um, you know, and meet that storage. I mean, you know, we're gonna have to share some of the shared driveway, but I, I know our parking area, I think we can get. But, you know, we, we'd be willing to put that in the condition that our condo association documents would contain language for that type of situation. And, and mandate that it not ever hit the trail. Um, that could be in our association documents management.
Okay, thank you.
John Racine here, I have a comment about that snow removal. So we live in a, an association where we, a couple of winters, we had to truck it out of here. And, uh, and it worked out really well. So it can be trucked out. So that, I, I don't think that's gonna be a concern.
It would be good to have it in the condo docs, so we still know it's.
I, all, all I want is that, that it is in, it's in the association docs that that has to happen. So that.
Um, we can give you a con- condition, you know, subject to seat, significant occupancy, we provide documents that show as such, or.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um.
Wendy?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna make sure some of these things, um, are addressed. We're, during this review here, we're trying to, um, touch on things that would be questioned. There's a letter that came in from the public and it has several, um, items that it note for, a lot of them with regard to the deed restrictions for that particular property and how this, the claim is that this, um, site plan doesn't address or doesn't comply with them, such as building heights, number of bedrooms and so forth.
Building heights been, has been amended and the deed, um, that was a, I don't know, a copy and paste error. Um, but that has actually been amended, I believe.
Yeah, somebody should go through all of these items, um, particularly with regard to the, the deed restrictions and make sure that they're addressed properly.
Can, Ben, the, the, I saw that in the deed that you sent out.
Yeah, it's been amended since then. Yeah, um.
Can you send us the current deed? Because I wonder if the, the reference to the subdivision plan in what I saw was wrong as well.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, if I could send you guys updated.
Ben, just.
The 521, um, is the subdivision plan, and that was not the final plan. That was the eight lot subdivision. That wasn't approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ben, just, just to keep everything, uh, up to hoil.
Yeah.
Please make sure we have all that and stuff.
Okay, okay.
Week.
Yeah.
Next week, so we make our 21 days.
Okay.
So that we don't hold you up anymore.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Wendy, would this be a good time to go through my list?
Yes, that's.
Yes, it would.
So, um, I had, I had some questions about the drainage too, while that's up. Um, the, so I guess my questions might be for Will, but. So the drainage report acknowledges that there might be runoff from the pay, the parking lot during icy conditions. And we've seen more and more icy winters where we have the snow and then it turns to rain and it freezes and, um. So I'm wondering, because we, the regulations require none of that to leave the site. Kinda what's, how is this porous pavement maintained is one question. Is it, is it salt? Is it sand? Is it both? What's the plan B if the culverts stew over top or if we see sedimentation of that wetland? Or if water flows out on a Golden Heights Road and then freezes, is there, is there room anywhere for any retention, detention? Pond or ditch or, or what's a plan B, I guess? That's a bunch of questions and how's it maintained?
Yeah, and we can provide the, the full maintenance plan. Um, you know, essentially we would be following the UNH Stormwater Center maintenance is what we'd be recommending. Um, and I think that does include, um, some salting just to, for ice management. But you wouldn't, we wouldn't typically use sand on a porous pavement surface. But, you know, to your point, I guess, you know, that there's, there's not really a means for another alternative pond, you know, I mean, our, 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 our system. You know, relies on proper maintenance, um, to function in the winter.
So we, I didn't see a maintenance plan for the porous pavement. I only saw one for the chambers. We'd like to see a maintenance plan for the porous pavement. And. So what's the plan B? I mean, what's the plan B if, if this isn't adequate and the icing conditions cause runoff and overtopping and a cover? Or, or, or runoff into the road that then freezes? What's, what's plan B?
Um. Well, I guess we would have to look at a, an, an alternative means of collection to get it into the detention system. Um. But.
Well, if I could add, I mean, we do have, there is the ability through the Waterville Company to shift that trail slightly. Um, I actually think we might already have somewhat approval to do so. Um, and you'll actually notice if you look on the left and if you looked on the right. This trail has actually shifted upward in our location as in reference to other lots. Um, you know, we have a little bit room near the drainage and shifting down. Um, I do think we could work with that to get a slight drainage ditch at the bottom of the driveway to collect some access. That is an option. Um, if, if that's what the board is, is, uh, interested in us doing.
Yeah, so, so one of the thing, and of course, cause it's conceptual, it's tough now because nothing, any, nothing the board are used to can be binding.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm, I, you know, I'm leaning toward recommending that the board ask you to see a plan B and, and. Probably, and this is something I touched base with, with Mark and, and Jim Mayhew on, maybe, um, possibly have a, a three-year bond. And if that plan B isn't required within three years, then release the bond. Just so, just so there's a plan B in place. And, and give it a few years to see how things settle out. Does.
Could I suggest either or? Cause we've, we've done this porous pavement a lot. Um, it does work, but I mean, you know, if we don't, if we can't get a plan B, maybe that's when the bond could come in to do, fix it. But if we, you know, I'm hoping that if we do a porous pavement, which we've actually had pretty good success with in the past, and we add a, a plan B. Uh, the bond just might be, you know, it's almost like having three systems in place when, you know, we've done a lot of just the single systems. That would be just a suggestion is maybe if we can prove to you guys, we have a plan B, um, that would suffice. But if we can't come up with a full plan B, then maybe the bond would come into play if our porous doesn't work.
Yeah, and my, my reason for, um, recommending the bond would be that the town would not have any way to require you to install plan B.
Yeah, uh, okay. So maybe until, until it's installed, maybe? Okay.
Oh, certainly. If it was.
Okay, yeah.
One or year two, you.
Okay.
And Mark, Mark wants to chime in too, and then I have.
I'll talk to the team, yeah, I'll talk to the team about that. But yeah, I mean, I mean, I think we can get one, a plan B. So I'm not super worried.
Can we hear what Mark?
Yeah, I think the, thank you, Tara. I think the overriding consideration, Ben, is just that we have a mechanism for review. So, uh, a contingency on the approval that we have a review in, I, you know, two years, I guess, would be preferable. Um, just so we can let it settle and, and actually see it in action for a couple of winters. Um, and then we can make a decision at that time. Uh, and I wouldn't see a need to continue the bond if everything were running well with Plan A. After that time period.
Yeah, my, my only comment is.
I know that, um.
Yep, go ahead.
You had said, I think that, uh, Jim would like to see two to three years. I'm, I'm leaning toward the three just because our weather can be so flaky now in winter that we could have, we could have a couple of what we used to think of as normal years. Followed by one of those where it rains and freezes. So.
Yeah. Question, the only question I would.
I'm not quite done.
Okay, okay.
If plan B, um, is installed in year one, then, then we'd be releasing the bond. So that's just something I wanted, um, to let you know that I'm, I'm concerned about. And, um, and I'm gonna be recommending that town council review the covenant language, didn't you kind of minimum documents? As with an eye toward, um, routine maintenance of everything in the drainage system, a, a mechanism for emergency repairs. Following the maintenance plan for the porous pavement and the chambers and laying out how that responsibility, how and when it transfers from you to the homeowners association. And I'm sure that that's all pretty stock language that, that you've used before, but we're gonna want town council to look at that. And, um, the rest of my list is pretty short, really. And you received, you received my comments on a marked up copy of the application, correct?
Yeah.
So there were some minor things on there that we'd wanna see, you know, that can be a condition of approval. But, um, we're still looking for a municipal services letter, um, talking about the adequacy of the water, sewer, uh, fire protection. Like we need in writing something from public works about the dumpster placement. Driveway permits were noted on what I, what I gave you. Um. I had a note about whether or not we need to run this 30-foot height limit by town council, but you said that's no longer in the deeds.
Yeah, that, I mean, I think that was, that was actually mistaken the deed, cause I, it's, it referenced that as, as written in, in town ordinance. And that's, that's not the way it's written in town ordinance. It was actually.
To my knowledge, it was never written in town ordinance. So, yeah.
Yeah, well, the low, I, I think they copied and pasted from the low density for, over to the high res, because somebody writing the deed must copy and paste it. Because the low, low res is, I believe, 30 feet. The, the vertical is different, so it didn't actually make sense. Uh.
So you gotta send us the corrected deed.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, that's, that's everything that, that I had recommended the board look for.
So just to clarify, in this corrected deed, it does not state 30 feet.
So, yeah, the new deed, yeah, it, it, it's not 30 feet. And actually, I think there was a variance written as if, you know, if, because I think the first idea is, is they have the ability to just grant a variance for that due to the fact that it was an error, but I believe they rewrote the deed. So I'll, I'll get you guys copy of the, that was, that was noticed like a week ago. So, um, it has been rectified.
If it, if it had still said that you needed approval of the Waterville Company, then, then my recommendation was gonna be that the board asked town council whether that's something that should be a condition of approval or whether that's entirely a private matter.
Yeah, we've been working with the Waterville Company all week on this exact matter, actually. So it's, uh, and I think last night it was settled. But, um, yeah, we'll get you guys copies of everything.
Well, that, that's everything that, you know, except for those minor things that I noted on the application and sent you.
Yeah.
That's everything that I'm gonna be recommending the board look for.
Okay, thank you, Tara. Um, can you mind stop sharing the screen? I don't know if it's Nicholas who still has it. Great, thank you. Um, Bill Larson, your hands up?
Yeah, uh, right. I have two questions. Has Chris reviewed this application from the standpoint of ambulance and fire truck access?
Yes, I, I will, I will get the letter for the municipal services, um, prepared next week and we'll get that signed off. Everybody, water, sewer, uh, trash and public safety have all looked at the plan and it's acceptable in all those areas.
Okay. And secondly, I have a, a, I would suggest that there would be a construction bond of some type for damage onto Golden Heights Road and other town roads during construction.
A sub, a sub, Madam Chairman, the, a subdivider improvement agreement will be required, um, upon approval of the plan. Uh, and we'll work that out. It's part of the, it's part of the process, Bill.
Okay.
Uh, Lisa, you had a question? Oh, you're still muted, Lisa. Do you see where it on you? Let's see. Ken, um, Nick, can you help her with that?
I can't force the unmute. I can ask her to unmute, but I'm not sure what that pops up on her screen.
Lisa, if you mouse over either the bottom or the top where you see some other icons, you should see mute and, yeah.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm concerned with the landscaping along the road when you come in from root for the nine going to the town center. It looks like we used to have a lot of trees along the road. It was beautiful. Even with the condominiums behind it. But I don't see much planning for this condominium division. At the tree at the beginning, at the end, but in between, it seems to be nothing. We'll have buildings showing.
Along, along Valley Road, there is a line of trees every, I think every almost 10 feet.
Yes, there is, but we have, then we should do division, new subdivision.
Yeah.
I don't see much on your plan right now. We're showing up as trees. When you all cut them down right now. The beginning.
I mean, yeah, I, I, I mean, when we develop this, you know, only so much we can do. I mean, so basically right now, we tried to encompass the house, the building with trees. If those weren't there, there would be tree plantings down by Valley Road in front of the buildings. So that basically we'd have 360-degree view with deciduous trees. But as we went out there, they're brand new planted trees every 10 feet. So if we added a sec, you know, a second.
If you keep that in mind, I would be appreciative.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Um, because at this point, we open up, if there are any members of the public with questions, I know we, we've tried to go through most of the points in the letter from Mr. Britton, but if you feel like there's something that we've missed. Could be the time to go through that.
Um, I will review my comments for the public hearing. I reserve my comments for the public hearing, apart from what's already been sent and stated in the letter.
Okay. Um, any other members of the public want to, um, have any questions? Looks like no.
Does the board um want Mark and I to run anything in Mr. Britton's letter by the town attorney prior to the due meeting, or do you wanna wait till after the due meeting?
I think it would be helpful to do it before. Um. You know, there, there are some points, you know, I did some research about clarifying, and, and some of it's perhaps just a misunderstanding of, of what was stated. Um, so yeah, there are certainly some points that would be helpful.
Mark, Mark has his window.
Oh, sorry, it's looking down. Go ahead, Mark.
Um, I'm assuming that you're gonna want us to wait until the additional information comes in to Ben? Because some of the comments that are made in that letter, uh, Ben just said that they may, the conditions may change, so I'm assuming that you're gonna want us to wait un- until the submission.
Sure, yeah. And, and to see the revised deed, yeah.
Yeah, see, right, right.
My thought was I would give Town Council my thoughts and ask him to confirm whether I'm correct.
Yeah.
We do that, yeah.
Yeah, we can handle it that way.
Yeah, so along those lines, Ben, the, the faster you could get the documents in, the better.
Perfect, sounds good.
Okay. All right. Anything else we wanna cover here with this uh conceptual review? Any other information you need, Ben?
I don't think so, no, with, uh, I guess I can ask later, but you guys don't know off the top of your head when the day, the date is for the next meeting to get everything.
Oh, the, so twenty-one days before the next meeting calendar, let's see. So our next meeting is June tenth, so kinda back from the ninth.
I'll, I'll verify with Town Council what that date is and communicate that later today.
Thank you.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Hate to miscount in a public setting, as I've been known to do. Okay, great. Well, thank you, Ben and team, for your time today. And um unless the board has anything else, I guess we're ready to move on to our next agenda items.
Thank you, Wendy.
Alright, thank you.
Actually, Wendy, Wendy.
Yeah.
Mentioned, um, there was, uh, I don't know how many letters we got. I know I sent one in that I had received um, commenting on, from the public that couldn't be here, commenting on the development.
Oh, okay.
Um, I, does
You wanna read that?
You should go in.
Do you, Wendy, do you want to do that, or do you wanna wait till the public hearing, since it's conceptual? I don't, I don't think it's in public comments, so.
Okay.
Don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that you enter the letters into the record yet either.
Okay, okay.
And can uh, can those letters be forwarded to Nate or Mark and then distributed to us, Nancy?
Uh, they was
Oh.
Reported to Nate and Mark, I don't know about the process for distribution. I figured they would do it if that was the plan.
Okay, thank you.
It was forwarded out this morning. I got it after the close of business yesterday.
Yeah. I have to look. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks everyone. Um, so we'll be moving on. Um. Uh, Craig Larson, are you, is he present?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, hello. Alright, so um we have I guess there's a little bit of of a document submitted for um a site plan review for a new deck. Don't know that we had it signed, um, and I think there is some um, debate as to whether this would be a minor or major site plan review, but do you wanna just talk about what your deck plan is?
Sure. Um, just to recap everything, obviously, we made it through the year with changes and how uh, business has been operating. Um, we anticipate, I anticipate that some of the changes that happened last year will continue to the future. And I just wanna um respond to those changes and um, as a business person, I want to make sure that we're serving uh, the greater public and the residents of the Waterville Valley in a good way, safe ways. So thus, um, we had problems last year with people um, wanting to use the facility and we weren't really totally set up for a hundred percent outside service. Um, thus, people were kinda chaotic a little bit, and it was a little chaotic for us to serve them in that fashion. Um, we're still anticipating that we're having problems getting people to be, to be inside. Uh, so what we're, what I'm thinking doing, what I would like to do is create basically an outside dining room area, very similar to our indoor ser- service area. And kinda um, not add seats, even though it, on paper, it looks like we're doubling our size. I'm looking to, to just not operate the indoor seating uh, when it's available to do the outdoor seating and vice versa. So um, obviously, our service is limited to our kitchen sizes and whatnot. Um, and that's basically the basic of it. So we'd like to build a deck off the backside of the building. Off the patio, we do wanna cantilever it over to the, over the irrigation pond. Um, about a third of the space. Um, I think the, the picture that you're looking at is a little bit bigger than, than, than what it is and a little bit, but it's in the general area. Um, and that's really the, the deal, is that we want to service the public on an outdoor setting in a controlled setting, whereas we can have assigned seating. Our seats would be the same as the indoor, but we have a bigger area because uh, the requirements to space them further apart. And that's just, just really the gist of it.
Alright, now, I should probably clarify that just um we do need to have this proceeding as a conceptual review, I believe. And how the documents were submitted. So. Now, I guess my biggest question is how, how this would work seating wise. I mean, I know you're saying, you know, it's a reaction to COVID and people not wanting to be inside, and I totally understand that. Um. But it, it does look like it would add a whole lot more than the what was it, twenty-six seats that you'd mentioned, um, especially if we're looking, you know, five or ten years down the road.
Well, if you're looking five or ten years down the road, you're better than me. Um.
Well, that's our job.
Well, I'm just saying to you that, that I do hundred percent feel that certain conditions and for, certain ways that things of operator are gonna continue five or ten years down the road. I guess my perfect example would be after nine eleven, they incited TSA at the airports, and they're still there today. Which is fine, and I just, I'm just saying, some things are gonna stick with us forever and ever and ever. And that's fine, so as a business owner, I just want to react to that and make sure that I'm ready to serve the general public and what they expect for a new change, I guess, is what I'm saying to you. So yes, I mean, you, our normal dining room table has a seven foot radius from the center of the table. If you were an architect and you were designing a dining room and you were limiting the seats to it, you would put a a, a seven foot radius in there. Well, that all went out the window. And now we're talking about six foot radiuses from the back of the chairs pulled out. So now you're almost literally, almo- almost exactly doubling the space. So now, if you were to set up a dining room table, you would have to use a fourteen, thirteen to fourteen foot radius for that table. Um, and prior to COVID, it was, it was exactly six feet. Now it's probably closer to thirteen to fourteen feet. Thus, you need a bigger area to actually do the same amount of seating. And so we have twenty-six seats inside. We would like to do twenty-six seats outside and just flip them back and forth. But at the same token, our outdoor seating, since we're constructing it, would be accommodating uh, this thirteen foot radius.
Okay.
Thus, it's a bigger area.
Sure. Any comments from the board? Questions?
Craig, I, I was slightly confused. Uh, are you saying that you would have up to fifty-two seats at some point?
No, I'm saying to you is that we would have twenty-six seats at all points. It would just be how we would use them.
Right, so at, at, at any given point in time, the maximum the club would have is twenty-six seats?
Under service, yes.
Okay.
What do you mean under service?
We were allowed twenty-six seats uh, for food service, and we would have twenty-six seats continuously as food service.
Um, but
There are other seats that, like the anaerotics chairs, which are just um not part of the um twenty-six seats.
Uh, Lisa, you had your hand raised?
I mean, if you can guarantee me people to come inside, I will be happy to keep it the way it is.
I have a question about, would it be screened in?
No, it's open, wide open.
Because it's kind of all kind of stuff flying around you when you want to eat.
It's no different than on your back deck.
Yeah, that's why I don't eat there.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Uh, Wendy, you have a question?
Go ahead, Terry.
Craig, on your um aerial view, shows picture of the building, and it shows a picture of the deck, the big rectangle is labeled as a new deck. There's also a square that's extending that building. Is that the extension that you put on last year? Is that there now, or is this something that's also gonna be part of that deck?
No, right now, we're not anticipating adding, adding on to the building.
So that that rectangle or that square that's added to the end of the building is your, is the buyer area now, is that correct?
Uh, the building that you see on that plan is the actual footprint of the building as we see it today. Um, so the shaded area is the proposed deck.
Cause that looks like a shaded area on the, uh, the end, added on to the end of the building as well. I'm just trying to verify that that is there now.
Can we get that image up on the screen so everyone can see?
We, we don't, we're not applying for anything to do with the building. The building is what, what is there today.
Okay.
It might be shaded, I guess, but it is all the same color. I don't know why. It's, it's more of a, it's, that's a shadowing of the roof off of um Google Earth, I believe, is where this came from, Google Earth, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, that is confusing. So that's, that's nothing.
No. I think it's a shadow off of Google Earth.
Okay. Thank you.
Minor question, Craig. Why would you want to cantilever the deck over the pond?
Cause it's gonna be cruel.
Not to complicate the construction of the deck.
I got plenty of money.
Lucky you.
Alright. Okay, any other questions?
Uh, this is Rich. Uh, Craig, uh, thank you uh, for the explanation. A, a couple uh, quick questions. One, uh, would you have and, and, and it's just my ignorance showing here, but would you have, cause I'm not in the, the business. Would you have the tables uh permanently, by that I mean out there, uh, when you're basically all season, or is that something you would?
We'd have them out there seasonally at best, you know, we'd have the, in the wintertime, there won't be any tables out there.
Okay, so you'll be setting up, and that, that gets to my second question, would, do you anticipate using the deck for, other than uh, seating for uh, the restaurant?
Um, well, food for service, I mean, I don't, you know, um, we would like to have everybody order food, I mean, but it would be uh, potentially just cocktails and hors d'oeuvres or whatever, I don't, you know, I can't speak to. But basically, what we're trying to do is corral the people, the customers in a, in a spot like similar to a dining room. How we operated last year was very chaotic.
So are you saying, you know, it's a Saturday night, the weather, you know, a little bit iffy, you have um your wait staff, would you direct them to only provide food for the inside, because it seems
Correct. Yes, that's how I would anticipate it using, and that's how the people are gonna basically wanna use it, I think, too. Um, when it's raining out, if, like in July, if we had a major rainstorm, I wouldn't, our, our businesses, you know, drops right off. I mean, we don't do as many services on the inclement weather. So we could accommodate them more on the inside, and you're gonna get less people showing up on a Saturday night that is pouring rain.
Right.
I mean, that's just a fact of, of how it works. On a nice sunny night, you're gonna get more people, and they're all gonna wanna go outside.
And so say there's a nice sunny, sunny, sunny night, and you're outside in the deck, and it's full, would you not have your wait staff service?
No, we would not have, we don't have the capabilities to do on fifty-two seats. We don't wanna have the capabilities. We don't have the help, we don't have the kitchen facility, that's where you're gonna run into a major problem. Uh, so with the inside would be totally shut down on the dining room side, you know, the patio screened in porch.
Okay. So
Just to let you, you know, on a downward side, eventually, we're gonna probably actually reframe that whole dining room area in that area anyway. It was originally just a open patio, and we've screened it in and then glassed it in. And that was like sort of on a temporary basis, and uh, at, at some point, we're gonna totally reframe it and then bring in heat and whatnot in there.
John, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, Craig, um, did I understand you were gonna cantilever this deck?
Yeah, I'm allowed to, under the building codes, to go a third off the footings. So yes, I would anticipate. I think it would, it would add a little bit to the cost of it, uh, but I think it would be kinda cool.
Okay, and did I, did I miss anything on the uh?
I'm sorry.
Did I miss anything on the paper work of the materials? Is it gonna be a Trex product or?
No, we're not using Trex. Um, we'll be using um, basically, um, maybe some steel I-beams underneath the, for the trusses or um, so LV um, engineered beaming underneath and uh, concrete footings. Um, and probably just regular spruce decking boards.
Maybe, I, I quite didn't hear that, was maybe some LVLs, is that what you said?
Yeah, it would do that under the framing underneath it.
Okay, and the railing, you might have, I didn't see that, so I'm sure you're gonna have a railing all the way around.
Uh, thirty-two inch railing, um, we might go, I would have to look into it a little bit more, but I might do a uh, a pexiglass type railing system.
Okay. Thank you, Craig.
Alright, so for moving forward, are you planning on submitting a site plan for next month?
Yeah, I wanna get this going if there's any.
Oh, Nancy, sorry, I just saw your hand clashing there. Okay.
Um, yeah, my question was about noise. Um, so moving the, um all of the seating around the building to that side and putting everyone outside, and then on top of water, which tends to carry noise. I noticed that it's increasingly closer and closer to the, the house that's right by there. I was, I was wondering if the house that's right by there. I was I was wondering if those neighbors were here and I'm also a little concerned that um it's gonna be loud for them. Um, I don't know whether uh there's anything that can be done about that.
Well, you just passed a new noise ordinance that uh says it's nothing can be heard fifty feet away. So I think that's that will probably dictate how that would be the control, I guess.
Craig, you're not talking about lighting that area, are you?
We're only anticipating um, there might be some lighting on the tables, but um personally, I wanna be out of here at nine o'clock every night. We're not anticipating a uh, it's basically a July and August type deal. Um, in at which time um it's light to eight thirty whatnot. So twilight, we're we're pretty much a a nine o'clock business. We're we have to get back here again at six thirty in the morning. Um, so we're not looking to extend our hours anymore than, and I'd be happy to put a caveat in on hourly. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Then I can blame you guys if anybody asks us if we wanna stay later.
We're good at blame.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will accept that blame.
All right, great.
Could I just ask another very, very quick question? Uh Craig, again, this is from my ignorance. It it may be helpful, especially uh when we consider this uh um as a site plan review. Uh, you may get questions of what exactly your uh your license to serve food allows you to do. I know we had this issue come up when we were talking about.
Well, you can look at the license if you like and submit the license, but we have a sports license, basically, which covers the entire property. Uh, inch to inch, boundary to boundary, unlimited amount of time, right up till midnight.
Okay, I again, I was just thinking about it in terms of any any comments that might come your way at the uh
They're like, the licenses are are online with the state of New Hampshire and uh matter of fact, we're highly encouraged to serve food.
All right. So you understand um what needs to be done for site plan application? Well, good. Do you have any questions about that, Craig?
Um, one, I just, if I could, I could, hold on a minute. I if I get a preliminary um site plan done by an engineer, but probably not stamped until after the ASBIL is done, that would be appreciative. Uh, we do have plenty, we're not anticipating any encroachments on the property lines, uh whatnot, things like that. Um, I'm not gonna get an architectural plan done on the on the construction, but I can, because of the size, it's not warranted it or the capacity. Uh, we're not going above fifty, so uh we're trying to keep it, you know, at the twenty six people limit. Um, so I I can get a conceptual plan uh that we would use to draw, to build off of it, but not a stamped plan.
Uh, Bill Larson, another question?
Let me unmute. Okay, I I think I'm on muted now. Um, my concern is with this plan is that there's adequate parking for whatever the capacity you you design in, you know? So somehow you need to address that, that there's there will be, there will be adequate parking.
I've tried to address that for the last three years with the town. I think they give me a temporary permit for parking on the street, which I think I'm happy with right now, as long as it keeps continuing. Um, there is a parking issue in town, all over town. Um, if you want me to take one of the holes out, put a parking lot in, I might consider it. But we have limited amount of space for parking on site.
Uh, this is Rich. If I can comment on that, uh as a select board member, uh we have granted Craig, it runs out the end of May uh for uh the uh uh a an exception to onsite parking across from the golf club. I think you all know the area I'm talking about that extends from Village Road down down towards Boulder Path Road across from uh the golf course, but that does run out uh at the end of uh at the end of this month. Uh, and uh one of the issues I think that the planning board uh probably needs to look at is uh the larger issue uh that Craig is uh uh, I think importantly, raising about on-street parking. And what's in our zoning and do we want uh and how would we wanna handle on-street parking in the future? I, do we wanna be be, do we want this to be like the uh the skateboard park where it's a, you know, we're temporary uh for years on end, rather than doing the right thing and changing the zoning if that's what's, if that's what's needed and if that's what we want?
Well, Rich, I I think you did change the zoning, that the zoning has been changed since then as and has addressed um the opportunity to approve um on-street parking.
Yeah, we we did, but we we left it still as prohibited, right? With the with the ability to I'm sorry, go ahead, Tara. Uh, remind me what we what we approved.
You you're able to approve um public parking. It's up to the planning board.
The planning. Thought the selectmen control the parking on street.
Well, they don't, they don't allocate spaces. I mean, it's up to the the planning board, obviously, with input from the select board or whether there's adequate public parking to count.
Yeah, I mean, you have to consider adequate public parking in the herring, but you don't out, you don't actually give permission for parking and only the selectmen can give permission for parking, which is what Richard just said.
No. Um, Wendy, so Rich, you know, the zoning now says parking provided by public lots designated on-street parking or other off-street parking may be utilized to fulfill some or all of the parking requirements when within a distance appropriate, the proposed use, not a not further than a thousand feet. So um
Okay.
If there's been public on-street parking approved by the select board, the planning board can count that as meeting some of their requirements when they do site plan reviews.
Okay, I I that does clarify it. All right.
It's not saying that the planning board creates on-street parking spaces. That's the select board, but if they're there, the planning board is now authorized under the zoning to to let that count.
So it was the select board's action to make it a temporary allowance, though, correct?
Um, so it's For I think two years, Wendy, roughly.
Right.
Correcting that, Craig?
Well, yeah, I thought it was a year, but it was year to year. I've asked every year. I actually, I think we're gonna get on the agenda to do it again.
Yes.
Uh, anyway.
I think it would be tough. I mean, for the planning board to count temporary parking as meeting requirement.
Right. I guess that's what I was trying to get at. Uh, it sounds like I'm laboring under misapprehension to use that overused phrase as to what is allowed on on in terms of on-street parking.
So I mean, just to, just to clarify, we only use the on-street parking probably a couple of hours of a week at best. Uh, we did use it. We hosted the Kentucky Derby Party and we used it that day, which was two Saturdays ago. Um, and it works out real well. We use it in the winter time. Uh, it works out real well and it's only usually on the Saturdays that we have the problem.
A target.
He'll need to show adequate parking as part of the site plan application, but since it's going to be due in a week and engineering drawings are are gonna be needed and and all the other details in the site plan regulations, I I think it'd be helpful if Craig was gonna be looking for any of those application materials to be waived. If he ran that by the board now so that he knows what
Yeah, I would like to waive waive a stamped structural plan for an open deck that's gonna be on grade. It's not gonna be, you know, sixteen feet in the air. It's gonna be on grade. Um, so I don't, you know, I built plenty of things before and uh it's not a um obviously, I don't want it to break, but um we do know how to build on grade on the deck. So uh I could, will have a plan that we will use to build off of and um but to get a structural stamp plan is almost, it's very hard to get today in a timely fashion.
My my understanding is that the board is not is not reviewing this as a minor because um the deck exceeds the limit in minor criteria. So we'd be, my expectation in reviewing this for the planning board is that we'd be looking for all of the items listed under submission items in the site plan regulations.
Well, then I'd ask, I'd prefer to get a waiver from a structural stamped plan, architectural plan for an open deck on grade. Um, we will give you documents that I think you can make a decision on and then it's between me and the building inspector to make sure it's safe.
I don't, Craig, that I don't see that as a requirement in the site plan regulations.
All right, then that's, but I'm just telling you what I'll probably have. And as far as the actual, and you know, the uh civil engineering work for their survey work, um, we did get a ASBIL plan and a survey plan on the, when we added on to the bar area to the clubhouse. Uh, we did provide after the fact, an ASBIL plan that was stamped and I prefer to do it that way. Um, at my own peril, obviously, is to give you an ASBIL plan after the construction of the deck. Um, so that we can get the actuals where it is and um I'm very comfortable that we are meeting the setback requirements of the zoning bylaws, which is what an ASBIL plan and you know, civil engineering plan really wants to do.
Well, uh, when I see the submission that comes in in a week, I'll I'll be able to get back to you really, you know, quickly as to what what else is required and if if you fail, you need or you could justify a waiver request, then you'll wanna add that to your application.
All right, I I'd like to have waiver all the complicated stuff.
Yeah, wouldn't we all?
I don't think I'm authorized to give the link to that.
But yeah, so but you understand the process, Craig. You submit the application, make it signed and um and then if there, if there are requirements, I I understand where you're coming from, you know, it sounds like it's a basic structure.
Well, it's not gonna be dangerous is what I'm saying. It's not, you know, um.
It's only the location of it that's required as part of the site plan.
Right. So if you can ensure that what you submit is accurate, um.
Yeah, and I would prefer to also submit a second plan showing really what ended up being there. Cause we're proposing a twenty-two by forty-two deck, I think. Um, I'm still going up in the, that way if we can get permitted for something like that, then I, but I can still be allowed to build a thirty by thirty if I wanted to, you know, I would, I might scale it back, actually. That's what I'm getting at. I'm gonna try to figure out really what we're gonna do here.
Okay, well, I guess we'll just see how it progresses.
Well, I'm gonna propose what I proposed and already and but I, you know, we're gonna see how it fits out here anyway, so.
Craig, I'm confused. It's like, well, I'm confused, I'm confused.
It's not, yeah.
And that, which is an unusual, but basically what I thought I heard you say is you're showing us a twenty-two by forty cop patio.
Yeah, wooden deck.
Deck. However, you may change your mind and instead of doing twenty-two by forty, well, you may do thirty by thirty.
Well, I would do a smaller, I I might do a smaller one.
Yeah, but thirty by thirty and twenty-two by forty are approximately the same square footage. I didn't do the math, but it's close.
It's two hundred square feet less.
Yeah.
I I think that's a normal prerogative anyway. I think we can, you know, if you get permitted to do something and if you end up being less, I don't see it as a major problem, but you know.
I think the key will be to make sure that the footprint that's uh on the approved site plan in includes whatever you're going to do and then
Yeah, would stay within that.
Within that, if you do something smaller than that footprint, that will be fine.
Yeah, exactly. That's what, that's really what I meant to say.
I I'm confused again. Twenty-two by forty is eight hundred and eighty square feet.
Yeah.
And thirty by thirty, I think, is nine hundred square feet.
We would come less, we would just get
But that's not, that's not
Like Tara said, approved for eight hundred square feet, we would build either eight hundred square feet or less.
So the footprint needs to be, I think, well, if it's thirty by something, that footprint is eight feet more.
All right, I'm gonna backtrack on the thirty. Let's let's delete the thirty by thirty. I misspoke.
Just make sure that the footprint on the site plan includes the most you might do in any
Yes, I I agree with you, Tara.
Okay.
I agree. That that was my concern as well.
Okay.
One question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Craig, the capacity of the deck, it's twenty-six seating seats for dining.
Yes, dining or service.
Okay, then in the conversation I heard some, uh, the number fifty go by.
No, 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 no. What, the confusing part is, and I do, on paper, it looks like we have fifty-two seats on paper, but how I'm saying is how it operate, we would only operate twenty-six seats. If it's snowing out, we'll be twenty-six seats inside. If it's nice and sunny and seventy degrees, we will be twenty-six seats outside. And that could change from month to month, day to day type thing.
Okay, but my, the the thought that occurred to me is that it's not your intention someday to like hold a reception out there with fifty people.
Well, we don't have capacity for higher than this number, but this, it would be, you wouldn't have a capacity to seat fifty people on a sit-down dinner, no.
No, but if they weren't sitting down, if they were, I don't know, out there.
And if we have, and if we get to that point, which we might get to that point, we would be back to you for a different application.
If you were having a stand-up reception?
If we were gonna have a reception bigger than the twenty-six seats, we would have to probably uh accommodate them and thus maybe permit. And that might come down the road. I mean, I mean, this is uh this business is an ongoing business that changes day to day.
Craig, what what I think Bill is saying is that the twenty-six people limitation
Well, no, our occupancy premium is already already higher than the twenty-six seats, be honest with you. So our occupancy is already above sixty. So um we are licensed by the town today at sixty seats. So we're just saying that the dining room, the one portion of the dining room that is sits twenty-six inside, we wanna do those outside and vice versa when it rains or snows.
I think it all just ties in, you know, I understand all the conversation where everyone's trying to get up. It just ties into looking at parking. So just, you know, we know we'll need to discuss that.
I might comment for
I'm not quite done talking yet, Craig. It so just be aware that that'll be coming up as we get into the application next month.
Yeah. Pedestrian village, right?
Yes, absolutely. But we know how people are.
Yes.
But you know, on on the parking, if if I understand what Craig is saying correctly, he's, he's just moving, potentially moving uh his service operation from one area to another. There is no increase in parking.
Well, unless he has, you know, as you stated, he has the occupancy for sixty people. Um, and so he's still within his rights to serve, perhaps not food service, but have other things happening. So there would be
On the deck.
More people, yes.
Just, I know this is not, it's hard to communicate, but what I'm saying to you is that we're trying to react to what we learned last year. And that that is where, really where this is all coming from is for us to adequately serve the general public in a safe environment, which we, it was pretty chaotic out here last year and we would like to rein in that chaos by corralling the people on a deck. Um, they were all over the lawn. They were everywhere. And we don't want to continue to operate like that. It wasn't good for everybody in concern. So I don't know how, maybe I'm not communicating, but it's our reaction. It wasn't good for everybody in concern, so I don't know how, maybe I'm not communicating, but it's our reaction to what went on last year, which I do anticipate things will continue in certain fashion. Some will be less restrictive, but other things, people's, people's behaviors are not as quick as turning on a switch, and their behavior is much different than what it was a year ago.
Okay, great. So we look forward to having your applications submitted, and have you on the agenda for next month.
Right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig.
Bye.
All righty, so master plan revision. We officially have Tara to help us with this for this year. Not sure if everyone had a chance to meet with their subcommittees. Tara, you had resigned out the, your proposed plan for that, right? Did everyone see that?
I did. And this was just based on, like, what you would ask me for, I think, was a worst-case scenario. If, if the committees didn't do any more work, then what, what a, what a work plan might look like, so.
Right. Can we touch base with everyone as far as where your committees are at? And maybe just refresh, there might be nicer, you know.
This is, this is rich. I have to confess that not, we've not had a meeting for either of the two subcommittees that I'm on. The, the land use and the conservation, but I reviewed what, personally reviewed what Tara has written on those two chapters, and I am fine with, I am fine with her plan of action. I also liked her description of her startup tasks, and there are a couple of questions she has there that perhaps we, as a board, will need to to discuss, so apologized, didn't meet, but that's what I think about the two chapters. I don't know what my other subcommittee folks think. Sorry about that, guys.
True, you're right under the bus, man. Okay.
I threw myself under the bus, too.
Yeah. Who, who else wants to chime in? I know for the economic development, we're under the bus with you two. We didn't meet either, myself or Bill or Bill, but we will, we will remedy that.
Following your example, the housing committee didn't meet either.
Just to reassure you, though, you, you're perfectly able to have me drive the bus, and no one needs to be under it.
That's perfect.
I prefer that option.
So I, I would like to jump on this bus as opposed to under it, but along with Rich, no land use committee meeting, but and also no recreational committee meeting, but I also, I read what Tara wrote, and I, I thought it was great, and I think we really need it. And we need her help, so I'm all for it.
Excellent.
All right. Well, I have a question on Tara. Tara, did you address the economic development aspects of this plan? In your proposal?
I, was that a separate section?
I didn't see it. That's why I questioned it.
Yes, a new chapter that we're adding.
I, I don't think I did then, probably, but I think I tied it in my mind in with some others. And I think it ties into, it ties into land use.
Are you saying we shouldn't have it as a separate chapter?
Yeah, I didn't necessarily see it as a separate chapter.
So we, we were under the impression that we were missing.
Yeah. I don't, I normally don't have it as a separate chapter. In, in your, in my proposal for you, I tied the economic development section from the working group into the community profile. Usually, I do a community profile that has a lot of the background data and economic development, housing, population, and so forth. And then the land use recommendations address some of our foundations. I normally don't have it as a separate element. I think it tends to get implemented when it, but so. There's been a couple of exceptions. With, with GORM, I did, because I was trying to, we were trying to really redirect GORM to be a trails-based economy, so I did some pretty detailed recommendations about a trails committee and so forth, so I did pull that out in that case, and they used it to get some grant funding, but I didn't recommend it here.
Okay. Well, I think you have a little background noise going on there. Did you have anything?
So, yeah, it's, it's wrapped into the community profile in the, in chapter one.
Yeah, okay. I'm fine with that, unless if anyone feels strongly. Oh, Bill? You're muted, Bill.
I'm sorry, I muted him because of the background noise.
Yeah, the problem with economic development is that I believe the town is facing a crossroads in terms of where, what a livelihood has been always based on the recreation industry. Do we want it to continue that way? And if not so, what's the basis of economic development here in town? So as long as that gets answered, I don't care what section it's in, but somehow I, I think that's a major chunk of work.
Yeah, I agree. And you feel like we can incorporate that in other ways, Tara?
In, in my proposal, I, I suggested incorporating economic development section from the working group into the community profile in in the vision chapter one.
Right.
So if, I know this is covered, as long as your budget passed, it's covered by my current agreement with the town. And what I normally do is kind of drive the process and facilitate the process and have items planned for your meetings as there's time at your meetings. Unless you want to have additional meetings, you might want to see how it goes without having second meeting. Yeah, be to see how it goes without second meetings, and so, so I would plan, I would be ready for that agenda item each month, and give you homework as we go along, and there'll be a lot of homework, because this doesn't this isn't a proposal for me writing an entire plan would be a lot more than this. This is me helping you move it forward.
Absolutely. Okay, well, good. So we'll look forward to homework assignments starting next month, or do you have something we, we should be working on in between now and then?
Be thinking about the questions where I wrote startup tasks and think about whether you'd be okay separating the community profiles, staff out from the vision in chapter one. We'll be talking about kind of, you'll be giving me some direction on what kind of plan I'm building, really.
Okay. That sounds very doable.
I don't, yeah, we'll just, it'll be the startup discussion.
Excellent. Looking forward to that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I, I do think that as, as this plan progresses, that I, I side with Bill Larson, and that economic development, I think, is more significant than a couple of paragraphs in another section. I, I think that the, the town's composition and the future of the town depends a lot more on economic development than on maybe other factors. I don't know what we're gonna put in it, but I think that it is, it's significant to the future of the town.
Well, I guess we can see how it develops.
Yeah, okay.
The issue there, this is Rich, I'm sorry, is that we have had a presentation by the Tyrell group as to what their plans are for economic development, which are quite extensive. I'm not sure how we capture that in our document, or if we want to capture that in our document.
I was gonna say the same thing, Rich. They're, they're talking about a significant expansion of the village area, as well as potentially, I guess it's a couple of hotels.
Right, I, I discourage you from getting caught, you're, I think, I think when you, when you spend much time even talking about what should be in a different chapter, you're putting the cart before the horse. As we talk about these issues, and something is like, well, gee, this really should be its own section, we'll, we'll do that. We'll certainly do that, but I think I've watched you spend a lot of meeting time in the past in weeds that really in my mind were putting the cart before the horse on the master plan process.
Okay.
Talk about the data and the vision and goals and go from there.
Let's proceed and see what happens.
Yep. Lisa, you had your hand raised, so we need to get you on a subcommittee.
The thing is, I didn't know who Tara Bamford is. Nobody told me. So I'd like to be included in any communication she has to put to other members of the planning board. Like, I didn't know who she was.
So I'm a contract town planner.
Okay, because Nick just mentioned you would email everybody, but I didn't get anything naturally. It was not included yet.
We'll make sure that your email is, is fully in everything. There are different subcommittees for this master plan, and I don't have the list in front of me as far as who's in what. But conservation, land use, housing, recreation, we're missing one. Anyway.
Conservation.
Yep, conservation, land use, housing, recreation.
Economic development.
Maybe, yeah, kind of parenthetical.
I mean, I didn't, in my estimate, budget for meetings separately with separate subcommittees, but I think there's certainly gonna be the natural go-to group for, you know, if there's data gathering, pre, pre-review of land elements.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to think that the subcommittees should be able to do all that type of work. We, we did, you know, while it's great to have you driving the bus, we do, we do all need to be helping with the maintenance and upkeep of the bus, and not just dump it all on you, so the subcommittees will be expected to still call their own way, so to speak.
Yeah, so I was thinking, you know, data gathering, input on things, kind of separate homework. I was just saying that my estimate didn't include meetings with different, my meetings would be with the planning board.
Yes.
Wendy, last year, I think it was determined that to call them committees or subcommittees, put them in the category where they couldn't meet without public. Are you calling them subcommittees now, or are they called groups now?
Terry, in, in my opinion, what you call them doesn't make a difference under ninety-one A. They really should be noticed.
So anytime that a subcommittee meets, then it's gonna be required noticement?
Well, no, we kept all the, didn't we keep all the groups to three or fewer participants? So we didn't have to notice, so we wouldn't have a quorum.
But, well.
Did we not?
Yes, we did.
You look uncomfortable, Tara.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, I'm not your town council, but it's what I generally recommend is following the, I lean really toward the spirit of ninety-one A, I guess, and when they say that some committees of groups need notice, that I just, I don't, my gut feeling is calling something a working group isn't is not the way around that. It's a, it's only a twenty-four hour notice.
Well, and I also thought that as long as we didn't have a quorum, we didn't have to notice.
Well, it's not a planning board meeting, but subcommittees of public bodies have to be noticed, too.
So really, all you're saying, it's a noticing issue. We should notice anytime we meet, but then it has to be available to the public in some manner. Now, we can't, a couple of us can't get together in somebody's house.
I guess. You know, talk with Mark and your town council on what, to find that line that
Okay.
Yeah, because for, for other, yeah, for other, whatever we call them, working groups or subcommittees, we've kept participation to fewer than, three or fewer members, so that it wouldn't have to be noticed in public.
So it's not a quorum of the planning board, but it's, just, I think, what, what your town council may say is if a couple of people are informally getting together to talk about a topic, that's fine. If you officially as chair appoint a subcommittee, then it's an official subcommittee of the planning board and, and a public body that needs to be noticed. So you want to, I, I think your town council's guidance was probably to keep it on the more informal, a couple of people getting together to talk about a topic.
Okay.
I, I think, I think I think we really have to clarify that, not only for the planning board, but for other town committees that are functioning, that as long as a quorum is not present, that a no notice has to be made. If that's not true, I think we have to make sure that all the town committees are aware of that.
Yeah.
It is totally true that ninety-one A, so some committees of public bodies are, are public bodies, too, under ninety, under ninety-one A for right to know.
Okay.
Okay, it's just, yeah, I was under the impression, since all that information's brought back to a public hearing, then there is public access to it, but Mark, perhaps we could look into this and make sure we're all operating correctly?
Yeah, that's, that's a scary situation.
No, it's not really, Mike, because we are noticing all the solid waste committee, the recycling committee, the energy committee, they're all being publicly noticed. So, and we are conducting those meetings in an open forum, so that if somebody from the public wants to attend them and listen, there's no requirement that the public participate in those meetings. It's just to have it available. You can't lock the door and have a private conversation. That's the spirit of ninety-one A. Okay, so all these subcommittees for the master plan, we can post a notice here at town hall and at the post office when you guys are going to meet, and then you meet in the downstairs meeting room in an open forum, so that if anybody is interested, they can come into town hall and they can attend your meeting. Or if you're gonna do it by Zoom, you give them the Zoom link and they can listen. But it doesn't mean they have to, you have to give them the opportunity to speak. They only need to be able to listen to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
So, so we, I think we are covering our ninety-one A bases. I, I think the only thing that we haven't been doing is posting any of the subcommittee meetings specifically on the master plan. So I, I think it's a very easy fix that we just post those, and you guys have them in a public forum.
Okay. But getting back to what I was saying with getting Lisa on a working group subcommittee chapter, we, I assume we still want to keep, it doesn't matter, I suppose, how many participants are on each, if we're gonna make it public. Is that what you're saying, Mark?
Well, we, I think you should still try to prevent a quorum of the planning board from attending, because then you'd have to post notice of a planning board meeting if you had a
Okay, so can we just review quickly who's in which committee? So conservation, we have Rich, and who else?
John.
John, John Racine.
John.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Rich and John, so two members to that committee. Land use, we have Rich and Nancy, anyone else? No. Housing, who's in housing?
Uh, Terry and, um.
Terry, Bill and Mike.
Right. Bill, uh, Spence.
Spence. And recreation, Nancy and?
Rich and, um.
Rob?
Rob? Rob, yes, thank you.
All right, so, uh, Lisa, we'd have room in either the conservation or land use, um, groups to work on those, uh, master plan chapters. Would you have a, would you want to jump in on one or, or both of those? Oh, you're muted.
How about conservation?
Okay.
So I, I really don't know exactly what the aim is in either, either one.
The master plan is a document that the planning board has to update approximately every 10 years, um, it's supposed to be every 10 years, running a little bit over.
So like in conservation, what would be included in conservation, like?
Well, probably the best bet is that you should have a, uh, received a master plan with the documents that Nick gave you for starting up. I know you probably had, you know, a ton of paperwork. But if you look at the master plan and read the current, uh, conservation chapter, that'll give you a, a good.
Okay.
And then Rich and John, if you can catch her up on where you guys have been at.
Yeah, have a look at it and see.
You wanna make sure she has the MRI? Too, because I think that's gonna be the, the, a lot of that will be in that chapter in the end.
Yes, and in fact, uh, we also, John and I, uh, look at this as, uh, coordinating, uh, the language with the conservation commission. Which we think would have a big part in, in, in helping us fashion, uh, this, this chapter.
Okay, good. So I guess we're good for our master plan discussion. Anyone else have anything else? Or we move on? All right, it's talking about future meetings. Mark, you had said there's gonna be an update yesterday in terms of meetings?
Um, yes, town buildings are open. Um, we, the select board is leaving it up to, uh, staff as far as access, like here at the front counter and, you know, the different buildings, but, um, there's no longer a restriction. Uh, if you remember at the beginning of the pandemic, we had closed all of the town buildings. So we can have public meetings here. Um, as far as the mask resolution, um, it didn't change all that much. It, it's still, um, it's going to be a recommendation, um, and an encouragement. It's no longer an expectation, um, wording in the, uh, face covering resolution. It's an, we're using the word encourage now. Um, in line with the CDC, all of it's in line with the CDC guidance and the state uh, best practices document that they just put out, which basically leaves it up to private businesses and individuals at this point, um, as far as face covering use, um, in, in, uh, different locations. So the choice for the planning board would be the downstairs meeting room is open and available if you wanna have in-person meetings. The selectmen have decided, uh, and they are holding in-person meetings from now on. Uh, and we will have, uh, remote access into those meetings for members or uh, general public who do not want to attend in person.
Now, as far as, um, at the New Hampshire state level, is the emergency order continuing?
No, the emergency orders are, well, it's kind of weird because some of the emergency orders have to stay in effect in order for the state to qualify for federal, um, money. Um, so they, the requirements, the state requirements are over, but the recommendations are still there.
And, and.
Go ahead, Terry.
The piece of it that allows us to have entirely remote meetings, the governor can only renew three weeks at a time and it currently goes to May 28th, so we won't, we won't know until May 28th. Mark probably knows which way he's heading, but we, I don't think we'll officially know until May 28th whether you can have the due in meeting entirely remotely or not.
All of, all of what you read today, Wendy, is still in effect till May 28th. The Senate is, um, still discussing the bill that would, it's already passed the House, it's, or it already passed the Senate, it's before the House. They're, they're still talking about whether or not to make it permanent, make the, the, um, the allowance under 91A permanent for, um, remote meetings. So we have until the end of this month, um, it is headed towards approval um, in some form. So I would expect that the order will end and there will be a new, a new thing for you to read that refers to the state law.
Yeah.
Before the end of May that the governor will sign that into law, because it has, it has a lot of, of support.
That's good to hear. What, I think it's important for the board to understand that what could change if, if the governor doesn't renew that piece of the order for three more weeks on May 28th, like he has been, and if that bill doesn't pass or it just goes to study committee, the kind of worst-case scenario for having to meet in person is four people need, four planning board members would need to be in the meeting room.
Right.
91A has always allowed other members to, with the board's approval, um, to be remote. The 91A already says that the, the board can allow members to participate remotely, so, um, so I think you should look at the due-in meeting as worst case being four planning board members need to be in the meeting room.
Okay. Um, just in preparing for that contingency, do we have, uh, four members who would be comfortable with that? You can just show by raise, raising your hands if you'd be comfortable being one of the four, it would be well spaced out, and I would as well. So we would have four of us, okay.
I'm okay with it, Michael Pelt.
I think with that, you, if they don't, if the bill doesn't pass and the emergency order isn't continued, you'll need to allow the public and applicants in there as well.
Right. Um, and so I suppose at that point, we'd have to consider the social distancing, how that would work. Because that's still part of the plans, right, or requirements, or is it all suggestions and we sit close together if we want?
Mark, I, I don't know.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Oh, as far as social distancing, you know, if there are four members and member, people of the public coming in, do we need to perhaps look at another space as well, or?
You can if you would like, but we have, um, we have appropriate distancing availability probably for six or seven, um, board members and at least two or three uh, members of the public plus staff. Um, the, the room's large enough where you can get uh, a separation. However, the CDC guidance changes all the time. Um, they're actually, I think, um, they're down now to four feet between and then it's caveated even further that if people are vaccinated, it's a different setup. So, um, the selectmen decided last night, we're not gonna go into that kind of detail in our resolution and we're gonna leave it up to the boards to decide how they wanna do it.
Okay.
Um, we, you could also schedule, uh, members of the public or others who are testifying so that they could come in at different times of your meeting. Um, that way you could have in-person discussions. Um, I, I really do believe in my experience with local government that being in person, uh, and especially with the decision-making, is, is a critical piece of what we do. And that's my personal opinion, but, um, I think that sharing information and, and, um, taking input uh, to some extent through this medium is a good idea and it has increased the participation of the public. I still think that when you're, when you're actually debating the, the issue and making the decision, it's really important to do that in person. So we can, it's hard, we can't do it at the school anymore because of their increased numbers, the availability of that space is no longer there. Um, we don't have the multipurpose room anymore. Um, and I don't see that changing, um, but we can find other spaces. Uh, the conference center during the week is generally not very busy. Uh, we can get some covered areas that are more open, um, you know, during the summertime.
Come on, Mark, we can use the arena.
We can potentially use the arena, but there's gonna be a lot of construction there, uh, this summer, so, um, but we, we can look around and try to find, uh, a larger space if, if we need to.
I think just for reference, Wendy, the, the select board yesterday is thinks that this is, we're gonna end up going hybrid. That will be the outcome of these kinds of discussions. So that's what we're planning for, for the future, both the board being there and then hybrid if people want to, um, either use Zoom or, or YouTube, whatever the setup's gonna be. So that's kind of where we think we're gonna end up going. It's where we are now, as far as the select board is concerned.
Yeah, and the, and the other consideration in this, we're gonna bring that, it was a very professional, uh, setup, uh, for town meeting. So we're going to, we're gonna take that contractor, the audiovisual contractor that set that up for us, and we're gonna bring them in here to the meeting room, and we're gonna do, we're gonna do better on both audio and visual connections um, so that we're more effective in the hybrid setup.
That'd be great.
A lot of towns are doing that, so we'll have a better camera and we'll have a better sound system. Um, so, uh, we, we will make those improvements in the next few weeks.
It'll, it'll be important for you to have your backup plan because the day we learn whether he, the governor's extending that permission is pretty much the day that, that Lisa is gonna have to mail out the public notices for, for Ben's project and for Craig's project. So we need to, we're gonna need to put in those notices, either Zoom link or what time to come to what room or.
Well, you know, it's, it, we can say town hall, Tara, because worst-case scenario, we can move all the fire apparatus out of the fire bays and we can have a very large meeting, um, very easily in that fire bay.
Do you have electronic access there?
So we'll either put, yeah, if it's gonna be, does that work if it's hybrid, Mark?
If it's hybrid, yeah, we, we have internet connection there so that we can, if, if we needed to, I'm not saying we, we absolutely will have to, but um, if we needed to, we could set up in there on a temporary basis for a month or two. It's warm, hopefully it's gonna be warm enough by June so that, uh, that we can all be in there and be, you know, we'll be dry and covered and hopefully warm enough.
Can we not put both, the, can we not put both, like a physical location and a Zoom link?
If you're going, if you're going to go back to in-person meetings, but I, I didn't know if you had decided that, if.
No, no, I'm just saying, if we don't know, like if we're waiting.
Oh, no, you really have to know when you send the notice out on the 28th.
Yeah, we, right, whether or not we're going to be in person or hybrid or all Zoom. I, I would recommend that you just, you notice it for town meeting. You have a minimum of four of you, right, that would be willing to come together to constitute the public meeting under the current statutes, right, which if the order goes away, we go back to 91A the way it was if they don't adopt the new language, right? And then the, if they, if the House does end up adopting it and the governor signs it, then all that's going to do is make it so four of you don't have to come here. But you can, right? So I would, I would post it for town hall. That allows us to do it in the downstairs meeting room or in the fire bay, right? And then do it as an in-person meeting with a minimum of four of you coming here, at least for the month of June, and then you can make a decision how to proceed after that.
John, you had a.
Mark, I have a question for you, uh, as a board. Uh, do we have the right to ask physically for the vaccination proof?
Uh, we do not wanna get into that, no, John, and that.
So wait a minute, so wait a minute. So if we have a meeting in that room and somebody comes in that has not been vaccinated, we can allow them in. Is that correct?
Yes, but, but the chair can require face coverings as part of the.
Okay.
Ending that meeting. That is, that is still allowed under Wendy's call.
There's no way we can ask anybody about their vaccination.
And we cannot quiz anybody, that is private medical information. If they wanna volunteer it, that's fine, but we cannot require someone to provide proof of vaccination to come in.
Okay.
Well, I, is there a way, I just have a question, is there a way to, on the public side to limit the number of people that can attend the person, the public meeting? You know, in the public space and then make everybody else go to Zoom?
No, not, not if the emergency order goes away.
That's right. So, but I think, Bill, we, by opening up the bay, just as an example, here at town hall, we could put, easily put 20, 30, even 40 people in there. I, you know, plus you can open up the doors, as, again, as long as it's not 30s, right? You can open up the doors and you can have air going through. It would be a pretty open air meeting at that point. Um, so I, from a safety standpoint, I, it would be very safe. Especially if you're gonna require face coverings for the meeting, like Joan did in the arena. I mean, that was her call. There was no requirement for that because of the way we had the chairs set up, but she just decided as the moderator that we would wear masks. So you can do the same thing as the chair, Wendy.
Okay, so it sounds like after the June meeting, we'll have a lot more of a concrete knowledge of, of what's allowed or what isn't allowed. It's just for June that we need to decide we're gonna do it hybrid, it sounds like.
Yes, and, yeah, and I think Tara's absolutely right that, that we should, we need to know that before we end this meeting today.
Well, I think you need a, I think you need a plan, I think you need to know what your plan B is, I think. But I don't think that's accurate that after June we'll know, because he could just extend it to, he's only been able to extend it three weeks at a time all along. We've only really known three weeks at a time when he extends it. That's all he can extend the emergency order for. He makes it for two weeks, now we don't know about the next month, but I, I, I don't think the board needs to decide, but I think the board needs to decide whether Plan A is gonna be remote if the permission is, is there or not, right? If you can decide Plan A is gonna be remote if the permission's there, and then Plan B is what Mark just described. Or do you wanna just go with what Mark described? You have those two choices. We, we can, we just. we need to know on May twenty-eighth, when the note, when we're finalizing the notice and sending it out.
Right.
What, what your preference was.
Okay, so let's do a quick roll call vote for either hybrid or, um, Zoom. And, a, as our Plan A, with the caveat that if everything were today, that we would resort to the hybrid. Um, so, I guess this is a, a preference for June, and maybe we'll have to take it month by month, but we'll see how it goes. So, um, Nancy, would you prefer Zoom or hybrid as our Plan A? Oh, so can you?
I like Zoom.
Okay. Um, Mike Capel?
Hybrid.
Uh, Bill Larson?
Hybrid.
Um, John?
Hybrid with face mask.
Rich?
I agree with John, hybrid.
Bill Spence?
Zoom.
Terry?
Do I get a vote?
Yeah, and this, I, it's everyone's safety, so yes.
Hybrid.
Uh, Rob's not here, Lisa?
Zoom, and they're often not in Waterville Valley.
Okay. So, it does look like most everyone, uh, majority means for hy, I, I would prefer hybrid myself, but yes, with face masks, so. Um, and the hybrid, of course, does accommodate the Zoom as well. So, I feel like for June, let's just plan to put the town hall as a location, uh, for the meeting. And, um, we'll see what happens next month. And yeah, we'll come up with a more permanent plan, but it'd be good.
I'm gonna continue participating remotely until the pandemic's really over because I work for nine planning boards and I would hate to be the one that, you know, continued the spread in northern New Hampshire.
Yeah, well, and, you know, save yourself a travel time if you can.
I miss the drives and everybody, but, um, but for my own safety and my family member in a nursing home, but also you know, if there's still a lot of spread in a couple of my towns and I'd hate to be bringing it from town to town.
Typhoid, Tara.
Yeah, I know, doesn't, doesn't have a nice ring to it.
Oh, goodness, okay, um. So, let's move on then for committee reports. Uh, Town Hall Group, we haven't really met, but there is, um, progress. Mark, would you mind, um, telling the group about the progress of the, um, of the grants? I know you mentioned they've moved into, uh, the next stage at a federal level, is that correct?
Uh, the road project has. And the wastewater treatment plant project will be submitted, uh, at the end of next week um, to go forward, uh, for a Senate earmark. So, the road project has been moved forward by, um, Congresswoman Custer in the, on the House side um, for a House earmark, uh, with the House Transportation Committee.
Does it pair both houses?
I'm sorry?
Does that go through both houses?
Um, yes, I, I mean, it's gonna be part of the federal budget, so yes, it will eventually have to pass both houses, but they seem to be continuing to work on it if you're, I don't know what to believe news-wise, but it seems like there's still discussions going on, um, in both houses. So, uh, the, I'm, I'm very optimistic, the really good thing about the earmarks is it's an eighty-twenty grant program, so we're talking about potentially eighty percent of five million or ten million, whatever we can submit for the treatment plant project, uh, to the Senate, so. Could be a lot of money.
Great.
Wonderful. Um, anything for the Conservation Commission?
Um, yes, but I have one, before I do that, can I ask Mark one quick more question?
Yeah.
Um, and I, this might be a little bit off, but, uh, do we need any adjustments on those windows? You're so busy, I, I didn't want to bother you, but.
That'd be great, awesome.
Okay. Okay, so the Conservation Committee, uh, we won't have anything else to offer you, we have a meeting this month on May seventeenth. Uh, if anyone wants to join us, uh, please, we're gonna do Zoom, please join us and, uh, we'll go from there. That's all I have.
What time is that meeting, John?
Uh, good question, usually they're around four o'clock, but I will get that information out. And, um, here it is, the leader of that, so I don't know where she is right now.
Just, just send me a carrot, could you?
Agreed.
Thanks.
Said, May seventeen?
That's correct. And our new member, what, Lee, is it Lisa? Lisa, you may want to join that meeting, so you kind of get an idea of how that.
Yes, I would, I would join it, yes.
Alright, that'll be good, I'm one of the ex-officios for that, the bridge between the planning board and the Conservation Commission.
Will you send me, uh, how to get on it on Zoom?
Yep.
Yeah.
The link is also at the town site.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yep, we'll make sure you get it one way or the other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so the next, uh, reminder for the conference this Saturday, um, the Planning and zoning conference. Um, I believe everyone has been pre-registered who've indicated interest, is that correct?
Yes.
I got my Zoom link, Michael Bell.
Excellent, um. Is there still time to register anyone if they had not reached out already?
I'm not sure, if anyone is interested, I would have them give Sharon an email before noon and then we can reach out to the OSI and see if we can get someone in.
Okay.
Yeah, I've done it before, it's really worth it, especially if you're new to the whole planning board business, it's really worth it.
Yes, I have registered.
Great. Um, okay, were, any other communications that we need to know about?
Uh, nope, that's it.
Okay, great. So, um, then our next meeting will be Thursday, June tenth. Try it hybrid. And that will be, uh, exciting process for us to figure out. Um, anyone have anything else?
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, if there's nothing else, you could take a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved, we adjourned the meeting.
I'll second that, John Racine.
Alrighty, so all those in favor, Nancy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill Larson?
Yes.
Myself, Wendy, yes, John?
John Racine, yes.
Rich?
Uh, Rich, yes, and Wendy, if you got a couple minutes after the meeting, can you just stay on here, I need to talk to you about something?
Sure, uh, Bill Spence?
Yes.
Alrighty, thank you, everyone, for your time today.
Thanks, Wendy.